Hey, uh, welcome everyone. Uh, we had a little bit of a long afternoon. Getting to the evening, but, uh, we'll go ahead and get started at this point. And, um, I guess, uh, the first one, Mr.?
Yep. All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, at the request of several members of city council, Eastern Virginia Medical School will come and give the city council an update on a specific program that they're currently operating.
Hey, welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We need you behind the, there we go.
Sure. Uh, thank you very much for having us here. This is a mini presentation of our community outage program that we have conducted, and we have actually reached out to more than 10,000 people in our community, mainly black churches. So, uh, without any further ado, I know that you have a very, very busy schedule. I'm gonna start. So this is about facts that we talked to our, uh, community about, facts about Alzheimer's that they need to know. So this is the outline of our talk, dementia versus Alzheimer's versus normal forgetfulness. That would be my part. And then Dr. Gibson will talk about clinical trials, and then Dr. Nik Najat talks about a head study, which is a prevention clinical trial that is going on right now in, uh, in our center. So, uh, before I talk about Alzheimer's and dementia, I just wanted to, uh, kind of discuss what cognition is. So cognition is the process of knowing, uh, being aware, thinking, uh, learning and judging. Essentially, what all of us right now do is using our cognitive skills, and we use it every second, uh, even if you are in sleep. Yeah, during sleep also, we learn, so we use our cognitive skills even during, uh, sleep. So when we talk about cognition, people usually think about memory. Memory is definitely one of the most important faculty, uh, among different faculty of cognition. So there are five of them, as you can see here. Essentially, uh, uh, memory is one of the main ones, but attention as well. If you don't really pay any attention, you're not gonna learn about what's being said. And language, and language is about, uh, not only talking, but also understanding, and writing and reading. So essentially, if you are going to be able to live independently, we need to communicate effectively, we need to understand effectively, and we need to really be able to write and read. And executive functions, like kind of, uh, skill sets that you get things done, uh, to execute, uh, your plans, that executive function. And finally, visual spatial skills. These are the skills that, uh, the way that you see the world through your brain, for example, uh, the shape or distance, uh, of objects to you. Those are all your visual spatial skills. So, uh, what is the difference between normal aging and dementia? So essentially, normal aging, uh, for example, making a bad decision once in a while, and that happens to, uh, all of us. How many times I've made a silly decision, and my wife actually has pointed out, so that happens. Missing a monthly payment, well, now, thanks got to, uh, the auto payment, I think we are, you know, we are probably immune from that, but that happens, uh, in, in normal aging. Forgetting which day it is, but remembering later. For example, if you don't really work during weekend, or if you are off, you may forget what day it is. Um, and sometimes forgetting which word to use, tip of the tongue, and that happens, uh, I think to all of us. And, uh, finally, occasionally losing things, your cellphone, your remote control. Uh, but dementia is something much, much bigger. For example, uh, if someone goes to, uh, drive to a pizza place to buy a pizza, and then forgets that that person has driven by a car there and just comes back home without the car, that's not normal part of aging. And this is actually exactly what happened to one of my patients. So that is not normal. So essentially, poor judgment, decision-making, inability to manage, uh, budget or daily things, uh, that is, uh, dementia. For example, losing track of the day or the season, people will ask 10 times during the day, what day is today? What is the season? So that is not normal part of aging. Difficulty is having a conversation. It's not about now tip of the tongue. Uh, it's about not being able to communicate with other people, or misplacing or losing things, let's say 15 times your phone during the day. That is not normal part of, uh, aging. So essentially, the difference, this is a question that people always ask, what is the difference between dementia and Alzheimer's disease? So dementia is when people have memory loss significant enough to affect their day-to-day function, and there are 400 different causes of dementia. And I put here five of them, just five most common ones, so you just see. So essentially, like frontotemporal lobe dementia, that's one type of dementia, Parkinson's disease, one type, Lewy body vascular dementia, and Alzheimer's disease. So Alzheimer's disease is a type of dementia, and happens to be the most common one. Seventy, more than 70% of people who come to our memory center, they do have Alzheimer's disease, and that's why it's so common and so important for us to address. Now, what are the culprits of Alzheimer's disease? As you can see here, uh, I don't think that I can use my pointer, but what you can see here, these red dots that you see there, these are amyloid plaques. So essentially, we have the deposition of amyloid plaques in the brain, and those amyloid plaques will, uh, start a cascade of events and produce these tangles. This is another type of protein that we, uh, we have in the brain, and those tangles are toxic to our brain, and that's why people lose, uh, memory. What happens to our brain? This is what happens to our brain. What you see on the top, that's a normal brain, and as you can see, you don't need to be a pathologist, right? You can see the difference between these two brains. Uh, and these are, by the way, head-on, so essentially, it's like kind of, uh, people looking at, uh, through the camera. So you can see the difference here, this space here is much, much bigger than that because in the brain of a patient with Alzheimer's, they lose tissue around, they start to shrink, and the shrinkage could be quite significant. It's not uncommon for a patient with Alzheimer's to actually lose, uh, uh, one-third of brain just because of Alzheimer's, and that's what happens in the brain. So a few things about subjective cognitive decline, and that's when people themselves start noticing some issues with their memory. These are the concerning fa, or red flags for people who actually have subjective cognitive decline, have noticed some change, and probably they need to seek medical advice. Age of onset over, uh, 60 years, perception that performance is worse compared to other peers, the same age probably, the same education, and then confirmation of decline by, for example, uh, spouses or children. If someone else is also concerned, that becomes much, much more important. And then persistence of, uh, worsening of memory for a period of time, because for example, if you have a surgery, uh, after that, you may feel a little bit cloudy, just, you know, having some issues with, uh, with rainfall, but that usually goes away. But if it's, uh, remains there, that's quite significant. And then family history of dementia, someone who has a, you know, one person with, uh, diagnosis of dementia, for example, uh, either siblings or parents, that increases the risk by 40%, and if that's two people, then that increases much, much more. And also multiple cardiovascular risks in and of itself, that's another risk factor. Someone who has blood pressure, cholesterol, diabetes, or maybe smoke as well, so that are the risk factors which are important if that person develops subjective cognitive decline. So, couple of more slides. How do we differentiate between normal aging versus something real? When people come to our memory center, we do have like 140 minutes of, uh, visits, we interview the patient and also family members separately, get all the information, we have a 90 minutes of memory test, and that's very revealing. If there is anything significant going on, we do some advanced brain imaging, special type of MRI, we call it volumetric studies, look at the volumes and size of different parts of the brain, and then also we do amyloid PET imaging and spinal tap. And these two tests are quite accurate, over 90% accuracy, believe it or not. So here I put a couple of images from a couple of our patients. On the left-hand side, you see, uh, the brain of a person who doesn't have Alzheimer's, and these are all horizontal cuts looking from the top. On the right-hand side, you see a patient with Alzheimer's disease. What I want to just draw your attention is about this hot red and yellow color here, as you can see, that's amyloid plaques in the brain. And we can see these plaques 20 years before people even develop symptoms. That's how good we are in terms of diagnosis, and this test is quite, uh, accurate. It's about 95% accuracy and, uh, is available through our research studies, and we can, we can do. I'm gonna actually stop here, and I'm gonna just hand it to Dr. Gibson. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. All right, so you are probably like, why are these three doctors here in Virginia Beach this afternoon? Because I obviously have not missed anything, right? So, let me call out three names for you. How about Bruce Willis? Anybody know him? You watched a few movies, right? How about Tony Bennett? Anybody remember him? Okay, how about Wendy Williams? Uh-huh, that sounds familiar. How about First Lady Rosalynn Carter? That's somebody too, okay? We are here today because in your backyard, you have an awesome medical center that can actually help you with some awesome information, and that is why we are here today, to share some information, and plus today, you don't have to pay a copay. All right, so I wanted to wake you up. So here we go. How many people know about a clinical trial? Anybody know what that is? How many people took a COVID vaccine? And you don't have to raise your hand, but if you took a COVID vaccine, did you know that that was a clinical trial? Mm, 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 mm. And why did you take it? Because you wanted to keep living, right? Yes. Well, there are clinical trials, every time you go to your doctor, you can ask about a clinical trial. Did you not know that? So, I'm gonna tell you why we do clinical trials. Okay. I want, first want to level set about Alzheimer's. Alzheimer's costs a lot of money in our community, and Alzheimer's is no respecter of who you are. Black, white, any color, it is no discriminator. Look at the figures. And I want to put those figures up there because in all of our communities, it is costing us money. And in our communities, we get phone calls about people in your community that might have Alzheimer's. And we want to make sure that you know what your resources are in your community. But the Alzheimer's Association, in collaboration with us, is helping us make the difference. So, almost two-thirds of Americans with Alzheimer's are women, and those are women in all of our communities who are trying to take care of their children, their grandchildren, and everybody else in those communities. And older blacks and Hispanic Americans are adversely affected by Alzheimer's. So again, that is why we are trying to make sure that we get the word out about clinical trials and where the resources are for Alzheimer's. Now, what is a clinical trial? Whenever we try to share information about clinical trials, most people say, mm, 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 can't do it, not me, that's somebody else, that's something in a research book. That's not true. We can't bring new drugs to market if people don't participate, and that's everybody here in this room. That's why we're here today. The goal of a clinical trial is to make sure that things are safe, and everybody here in this room is an educated person, and that's why we're here. So, the reasons to participate in clinical trials are to help others, and sometimes it's not even about us. I'm a grandmother, I know I look younger, too young to be a grandmother, but you sometimes have to do this for your grandchildren, right? So, things to ask when you become a part of a clinical trial, and my colleagues here are gonna tell you about the clinical trial that we are doing down the street, is that you always need to ask, what is the purpose of the clinical trial? Because sometimes it's not always a good fit for you. You also need to ask, how long is the clinical trial going to last? And sometimes it might last three, four, five years, but that could be a drop in the bucket. Is it safe? Who's going to monitor it? And the three of us on the clinical trial that we will be talking about, we are the co-investigators on that trial. I'm a nurse practitioner, there are physicians, we also have a pharmacist who's working along with us on our clinical trial. Are there short-term and long-term benefits? Ask the questions. Do you have to pay for the drugs? Now I know all of y'all make big money up in here. Uh-huh, I wanted to see if you were awake after lunch. And is it safe and is privacy protected? Also, the other things you need to ask, make sure that you write down all your questions, and then we will make sure that we leave information behind because we hope that you do ask questions. And then now I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, but please remember the four people that I told you about. Now here's the question, I want to make sure you don't have Alzheimer's. Who are the four people that I told you? Bruce Willis, right? Wendy Williams, who else? Tony Bennett, and who is the First Lady? Okay, you don't have Alzheimer's, you passed.
All right, uh, so for my part, I'm gonna talk about a very important, uh, clinical trial of Alzheimer's disease prevention called a head study. But before I talk about a head study, I wanted to show you this, uh, picture. Uh, so we use the iceberg as the analogy for Alzheimer's disease spectrum. Uh, what it means, that the changes in the brain that Dr. O'Gravey shared earlier, the, you know, tangles and plaques build up in the brain, uh, 20 years before we start to have the signs of memory loss, and we call it preclinical Alzheimer's disease. So as you can see, the big portion of the spectrum is in this stage. The patients, people who come to our clinic at Eastern Virginia Medical School, uh, that we see they are in the symptomatic phase, and that's, uh, majority of them are either have dementia or at the dementia stage or mild cognitive impairment stage, which is the symptomatic phase. So with the head study, we are trying to intervene at the preclinical stage, when the changes are in the brain, but, uh, we don't have any symptoms. So the name of the study is a head study. This is a new Alzheimer's prevention study, uh, that is testing whether the new treatments delay the memory decline in people up to 20 years before symptoms appear. Now, you, you might ask why it's important to intervene at this stage when we don't have symptoms. So one is that we know once we get to the symptomatic phase, the dementia stage, there has already significant damage which now, uh, which is not reversible to our brain. Uh, so we are hoping with intervening before this stage to change the clinical course. And nowadays, we have these diagnostic tests that Dr. O'Gravey shared earlier, we are using the amyloid PET imaging or spinal tap for diagnosis of Alzheimer's, which we can use, you know, for the diagnosis, uh, even at the preclinical stage. And, um, Alzheimer's disease is similar to other diseases like cancer. So as you all know, if we diagnose cancer at the late stage, when it's spread to the body, it's too late, uh, for treatment, but if we catch it at the early stage when it's confined to the tissue, it, the chance of curing the disease is much higher. So Alzheimer's is very similar to this. If we can intervene at the preclinical stage, when we don't have that high burden of the plaque, the Alzheimer's plaque in the brain, uh, we are hoping to, uh, prevent, uh, the disease. So the head study has, uh, two different arms. So basically, uh, the people in the study, they will have been, uh, they will have this test for the level of the amyloid plaques in their brain. People who have intermediate level, they will be assigned to a head A3 trial, and people who have the higher level of the, uh, Alzheimer's plaque or amyloid plaque, they will be assigned to a head A45 trial, and they will get the tailored dose of the treatment based on how, uh, how is the burden of the plaque. Uh, so basically, in the A3 trial, people will get the treatment every four weeks, and in the other arm, uh, people with higher level, they will get the treatment for two years, and after that, that would be one, uh, uh, once every four weeks. So the head, uh, organizations and sites, uh, is funded by, um, NIH and several other organizations. ESAI is one of the main founders of this study. So this is an international study, there are 100 sites, uh, worldwide, 75 are in the north, uh, northern America, and, uh, here at Eastern Virginia Medical School, we are one of the active sites. So why this study is very unique? Uh, first, uh, we are again, uh, targeting the earliest changes, which is the intermediate level of the plaque in the brain, and, uh, we are able to enroll people as young as 55 years old, so this is another strength of this study, and these are people who are worried about the risk of Alzheimer's in future, but they don't have any diagnosis of dementia or memory loss, they're at the preclinical stage. And the other very important point is that we are using the, we are studying the treatment that is now FDA-approved for dementia patient. The name of the treatment is Leucanumab. Uh, the Leucanumab was FDA-approved last year that we are now offering to our patients who have Alzheimer's and are at the dementia or mild cognitive impairment stage. So here, we have put this picture of amyloid PET scan, uh, on your left-hand side, this is the PET scan before receiving the treatment, and right-hand is after the treatment. And basically, what this, uh, treatment does, it removes the plaques, the amyloid plaques from the brain, and it can, you know, make it almost to 0%. So after the treatments, you know, it's completely cleared from the brain, the plaques. So you might ask, who's eligible? Uh, age-wise, anyone between 55 to 80 would be eligible, and this should be a patient who have not been diagnosed with memory loss, and that's one of the screening tests. You know, we do the memory tests and confirm that the patient, the participant doesn't have any, uh, memory loss, but, uh, when we do the image, imaging, like the amyloid PET scan, we can see the evidence of Alzheimer's plaques, or in the spinal tap, that's another test that we can confirm that they have the pathological changes, uh, of Alzheimer's. This is a four-year study, and our participant need to have a study partner, uh, someone from friend or family, not much requirement, I think it's just once a year, uh, meeting with the study partner. Uh, so that was just briefly about the head study, now I'm gonna turn it back to you.
So we want to thank you, um, for your time, um, this afternoon. We hope, um, that we have shared with you two things, um, that number one, we are a part of your community, and we hope that you have some information, accurate information about what Alzheimer's dementia is. Number two, we hope that you will consider becoming a part, maybe, of a clinical trial. But number three, we want to leave you with some good news about brain health, about what you can do about taking care of your brain. So here you go. What can you do to take care of your brain today? Number one, you can do some regular exercise, and that doesn't mean you gotta join a gym, you just gotta do some regular exercise. Number two, quality sleep. That means at least six hours, not four, I'm a nurse, I'm telling you. Number three, stress management. It helps to clear the toxins out of your brain. Number four, a healthy diet. You gotta at least eat two meals a day. Number five, mental stimulation. Okay, you're here working, that's good. And then active social life, that's a good thing. And then there's also some other things, um, some lunch and learns, um, we partner with, um, our health systems to do things for the community, and we want to thank you for your time. And then if you're interested, um, in signing up for any, um, of our, um, studies that we have, we have our community health workers who are here with us today, and we want to thank you for our time. Thank you.
Thank you, very well done. Any questions or comments? You know, I think, you know, once again, as we appreciate the fact that, you know, our, uh, one of our main focuses in the city of Virginia Beach is mental health, and this is certainly an important key component of it. Um, having the, uh, having worked with many, uh, patients in the past, and, you know, I'm a certified memory expert, uh, as a physical therapist, and, you know, this really affects families. And, uh, you know, I think there's a book out called The 36-Hour Day, uh, that really identifies, you know, the need and what families go through with care. So, but once again, I think when we, we probably, every one of us knows someone who, who has affected by this. So, but once again, I think it's a valuable study, and, uh, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And I'm with Jennifer, uh, with our cards, um, if anyone else, um, needs to know our information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, all right.
Okay, folks, uh, last Tuesday, we had the opportunity to hear, uh, you know, uh, you know, um, you know, about the collective bargaining, we started the conversation rolling there, and we, uh, we got some useful information, but now is over the next couple of weeks, uh, we're gonna be in decision mode in terms of process and, you know, some of the other considerations, and, you know, I thought it would be valuable to schedule a time after we heard the initial to at least have a preliminary discussion on this among ourselves. And, uh, just to make sure everybody's included, if it's okay, maybe we go around the table and, you know, just, you know, give some thoughts and opinions about where we are and, you know, where we could go, or, uh, you know, because once again, this is gonna be a very important, uh, discussion going forward. Jennifer, would you like to kick things off?
Sure, I pulled up my notes from the public hearing, um, trying to hear themes about some of the arguments for, uh, having collective bargaining and some of the arguments against, and, um, I think some of the strongest, most consistent arguments against collective bargaining that if we can answer, so in terms of trying to bring the community together and finding common ground, um, questions that I heard repeated are, what problem will collective bargaining solve? So what, in what way will collective bargaining be different from what the city is already doing with its management practices? And in what way will the budget be impacted? So I know that there's, I've, I've heard public concern about, um, collective bargaining will then mean losing control over the budget, uh, the city council, perhaps even the city manager will lose control over the budget and will lose control over policymaking. And so I think that if these issues can be addressed and clarified, it could be a nice way for us to move forward to see that this is something we can do.
Okay, and, uh, thank you. Uh, Hutch, and, uh, Hutch, could you do me a favor tonight? We're giving a special recognition to fallen firefighters, would you be so kind to do the proclamation?
Sure, be proud to.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I, I think I'd like to just defer, if you don't mind. I'd rather hear what everybody else has to say before I, before I say my piece.
Okay, that, that'd be fine. Josh?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing what we did on Tuesday and thinking about this issue, um, I, I've, I've had a couple of questions and, um, and concerns that really just needed to be addressed, and I'm, I'm hoping we can use this as a forum to, you know, help me understand, help everybody understand, um, because there is a concern that, and we heard it loud and clear from the public, that, um, that, that we shouldn't have our hands tied when it comes to budget-making, appropriation-making. And I know we've got And I know we've got the Virginia Code that sets forth the collective bargaining, you know, option for localities. It's section 40.1 dash 57.2B. And it says, no ordinance or resolution shall include provisions that restrict the governing body's authority to establish the budget or appropriate funds. I'm wondering how that reconciles with a labor agreement that may include a binding arbitration provision. So, I mean, any budget is a collection of choices. So, so if we have commitments that we make in a labor agreement and because of changed circumstances, for whatever reason, we find we can't honor those commitments, but we decide to fund a road project, or we decide to fund Moca or a festival, or God knows what else, how, how we're not, you know, hauled in in front of an arbitrator or a judge to, to, to say, well, you, you decided you couldn't meet your obligation over here, but you met it over here, you made a choice over here. So my question is, is can we be forced to spend money? And obviously there's setup costs involved, but if we get an arbitration decision or some other kind of decision that, that impacts us or could potentially impact us financially, do we have to accept that? Can we reject it? What, what in the contract is binding and what isn't? So those, that's question number one for me. Another question I have is what protections the locality would have in the event of a change in the law. So right now, state law provides that it's illegal to strike. And if anybody does strike or a sick out happens, there's a one-year bar for public employment. And, and I just read to you the code section that says, you know, that, that, that preserves our budget making authority. So, so what happens if that changes? Would, would a change apply retroactively to an agreement that we're currently in? Would it apply to a new agreement? Should one be renewed? Do we have any flexibility to withdraw? Another question I have is what protections would we have in the event of changed economic If God forbid, we were to experience another pandemic, a terrorist act, or just a recession, are there mechanisms available for us to come back to the table and renegotiate terms? I think everybody needs to maybe be a little bit more clear on what the process is going forward. So I know there's a, there's a yes ordinance that authorizes the manager and the city attorney's office to proceed and draft yet another ordinance that would provide the framework for what collective bargaining could look like. And that would be subject to negotiation. Then there would also be a labor agreement that would be subject to negotiation. So I, I think we'd need to be clear on what the process is going forward. And I want to make sure that the estimates that we've been provided on in terms of setup costs are accurate. I think I recall them being somewhere shy of $900,000 annually. And I took a look at, I mean.
No, I think, I think, is it 900,000 annually or was it about 400,000 one-time costs and about 500,000 annually? And that varies depending on the scope of collective bargaining. You know, so if it's like one bargaining unit or more, it could impact that cost and worth.
Okay. So I, I just want to be clear on that because I've, I've heard people talk, you know, there are a lot of numbers being thrown out there, but those are my concerns. I mean, and I'm sorry to take up so much airspace, but I mean, this is an important issue and, and I mean, us as a, us as a governing body, I mean, we're board of directors of a two and a half billion dollar public corporation. And I think it's our job to maintain flexibility to the greatest extent possible. And, you know, there, there are obviously fiscal impacts that, and financial considerations, but there's also, on the other hand, there's the workplace conditions, the, the quality of working life aspects of, of what, what we're hearing from the workforce in terms of why they desire this. There's the policies and procedures, there's the rules of the road, there's the, you know, just the, the certainty of knowing that, that there, there would be a, a neutral arbiter to, to reconcile disputes in the event of an impasse. Those are my questions. And I, I would hope that if, if we can have those questions answered, that they be circulated among the body so that, so that we can all be benefited from the answers and then have those answers available to the public also.
Okay, Sabrina.
I remember being a new council person coming on city council and sitting down and talking with staff in the very, very beginning about collective bargaining, what that could mean for the staff, and then, you know, the cost associated with it. I remember having those earlier conversations, you know, on the onset. Also remember talking with public safety members, staff about their concern and, and concerns throughout the city in terms of pay. And we certainly do and have had issues when it relates to compression. And, and a lot of those issues stem back to not providing the increase as it relates to cost, cost of living raises and other raises on a consistent basis, which as we know, creates compression, it creates issues. And so I noticed that when I came and became a member of council. And so we, we certainly have done some things to address those past issues. But I, I do think in moving forward, you know, there is certainly more that we can do. I think from hosting the series, or excuse me, the community meeting that I hosted, I wrote down three things and they were pretty much summarized some of my thoughts about collective bargaining. First, it is, it's important to provide details about how much collective bargaining implementing at what cost. And so from a lot of the citizens from that community meeting, I, I talked to quite a few who were interested in making sure the people who work for this city have a, you know, certainly a livable wage, a competitive wage, but their concern was how much is it going to cost? What's the cost on the onset of implementing such a program? Two, collective bargaining has a human face and we know that. We saw many of the members come out, employees, staff, come out to talk about what collective bargaining would mean for them. And I think it's very important, and we have some folks sitting here today or here who are advocating for collective bargaining. So it's important to know that there is a human face to this whole discussion and it, it impacts lives. And so in that, I know that I've talked to many folks, staff who've had concerns. And so I know that there's a human piece there and it's important if, when we look at this issue, to understand that human piece. And that as an elected official, I will say, I'm an elected official, certainly happy to serve, but I also understand that the folks who are asking, the staff, public safety who are asking for this, they are the folks who do the work. And so it is important, when I think about collective bargaining, to make sure I'm considering that they do the work. And without them, we would not have as much progress that we have in the city. So certainly respect that human piece and the fact that our, our staff and public safety, they do the work. And so the last point I would say, certainly there are diverse perspectives. That was brought out during the community meeting that I had. And you had different sides, different perspectives, different facts on both sides. And it's, it's important to hear the facts. And I heard a lot of facts from that meeting. I heard a lot of facts from the meeting last week. And I think it's important as we move forward to understand what the facts are concerning collective bargaining, what it is and frankly, what it's not. And so I certainly have been a supporter of collective bargaining and, and the staff and their concerns, and I've heard their concerns. And I'm supportive of any type of program that is going to help, help staff get their concerns out, to have an advocate, to ensure that they have parity in terms of pay, to make sure they have a livable wage, they're able to sustain their families and to live in this city. And so I'm very supportive of that. And as we move forward, I think we do need to get into the details, understand the details and how this particular decision certainly can impact the city. So we need those details. And also we should look at some of the other cities like Fort Smith. Fort Smith has agreed to collective bargaining and see how they are working forward to implement that process. So those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Barbara?
Well, I think all the things that have been said, you know, has pretty much put everything on the table. And if you answer all those questions, there's probably pretty well covered it. But I'll just say, in, in trying to answer those questions, I just feel like this is an extremely important step that we're looking at. And we have to make certain that if we do go forward, we've got it right, because I think once we go forward with this, there's no turning back. And I, I think it's such a broad change that we really need to be absolutely certain we've got all of the issues. But I, I would like to know what are specific things that we are not doing now that we need to do? Because I know that over the time that I've been on the council, every council I've ever belonged to has been greatly concerned about our staff, has wanted to do everything we possibly could to make working here the best job. At, for, for a time, we had as our policy that we were going to be the highest paid in the region. And somehow or other, we slipped away from that. But I think that there's no doubt that the council now and the councils in the past have had great concern for our employees, great respect for all the work that they do. And we certainly want to make sure that we are doing what, what we can to, to make working for Virginia Beach the best job you could get. But what are we not doing that has got us at that position? And what can we do or what could we do with collective bargaining to cure those things that we're not doing now?
Okay, Marv?
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree, Mrs. Henley, that this is a big decision for this body and for this city. And Councilman Schulman, you summarized some questions that I have, but I'll summarize here in a minute. There's five areas that I'd like some more information on. But in general, we were elected to make decisions for the best interest of our city. And so under that, God, under the guise of that question right there, you know, what were you elected for? How do we compete with the private sector to hire the best employees? Private sector, you have the right to belong to a union. And public sector, this is the, the question on the table, collective bargaining. So I think we need to take that into account. We compete with other cities, we compete with the private sector, we're understaffed in, in police, fire, EMS, other areas of the city. So I have concern, you know, how we compete with the private sector to hire the best employees. And I would like to see more comparison of salaries and benefits across the board and in all areas. So the five areas, the binding arbitration, yes, that's a big question in general. You know, how, how binding is the arbitration? Who makes that decision? I'd like, I've had some conversations with parties on that, but I'd like to have more of an official description on the pros and the cons, and maybe that's a part of the agreement, and I'll come to that in a minute. Yes, changes in the law in Richmond, what happens if strikes are allowed? If the General Assembly changes that, what, what happens with their agreement? The vote on April 30th is a yes or a no on collective bargaining? So if it, so by chance, if it is yes, then we go to an agreement, which I understand will take some time. But what happens if we don't come to an agreement, which in my opinion could happen? What, what happens to that? And in the case of a, of a pandemic or a recession or geopolitical event, you know, what happens then? And of course, that can be a part of that agreement with labor agreement, but that's also something to consider. And then just in general, in terms of what I've heard from my conversations, conversations and meetings, is there an employee handbook for all city employees or is it by department? By department, does, or is there both? Is there, so I'd like to find out, because I'm, I'm told it's only one and one size and that doesn't necessarily fit all. There perhaps is not, but I'd like a little bit more information on that. A big decision, no doubt. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. So I guess first is I, I don't think we've had sufficient public input or something like this. We've heard from a minority, on both sides, a minority of residents and a minority of employees, depending on who you ask. You'll talk to employees that support collective bargaining. If you dig a little deeper in that conversation, you may find that the reason they support or don't support collective bargaining goes back down to employee pay, compensation, safety. If you go a little further and ask questions, you just find that they want to be able to take care of their family, these employees. Last week, the city manager, we had an exchange and I was surprised. He said we couldn't afford to, I guess, option A, when previous council looked at the three options that were given based on the step plan. And the city manager also stated that if we were to do a market survey salary, which I think would be prudent if we don't know where we stand in terms of pay in the private sectors, Councilman Remick brought up, an organization, a corporation would not go down the road of making policy if they didn't understand where they currently stood, the current state of pay. And so we have an opportunity here as a council to direct the city manager to, and his staff, to provide an updated market survey salary, which I don't know why we wouldn't want that if we don't know where we stand. And the manager's on record last week stating, we don't know where we are. He directed his staff to do a fire staffing assessment. And so I would love to have an assessment of where we are as a complete staff, because his statement that if we were to, Mayor Dyer, if we were to initiate a market survey salary, it would send the message to staff that we were going to do something. Well, that would be my intention, to send the message that we are going to do something. Because again, when talking to these men and women that are serving all districts, all communities, the resort area, the question I get asked in the public is how can we afford this project? How can we afford that project? How can we afford that investment, but we can't afford to invest in our staff? And so I don't think it is a matter of whether the previous council or this council cares for people. But there's an old adage that you put your money where your mouth is. So if we are concerned about staffing, if we're concerned about retention, if we're concerned about compensation, I think the first step before entering into any bargain or, or negotiation would be where do we stand at current state? And that's further evidenced by a report that we received in our April 12 packet in response to questions about the fire pay. And immediately, within a week, we received an email from Max Gonano. It's a public, public email stating that the numbers we receive were incorrect. So how do we make decisions if we receive information from staff, which I take to be correct? I don't think they would be misleading us. The manager would not give us information that's incorrect. But we have one of the leaders of this initiative for collective bargaining, Mr. Gonano, writing to us that, I'll just quote, most notably, "It is disingenuous to talk about the pay for a position when it is calculated differently between the cities." So are we comparing apples to kiwi or is it apples to apples? I don't know. And so I think the first step is where do we stand? There is disparity amongst the workforce. Just go ask them. Stop at a Wawa, stop at a 7-Eleven, go talk to a public utilities worker. Find out if they're happy working here. The answer I hear eight out of 10 times is yes, I'm happy, but I'd like to get paid more. The answer I hear eight out of 10 times is, yes, I'm happy, but I'd like to get paid more. Yes, the step plan was good, but... And so I think the first step is, where do we stand? And we don't know today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just really listening to my colleagues today as we listened to the community last week, and we'll hear from them again next week. So I think I'll defer as well.
I got a chance to listen to several groups. One group called me and said, we'd like you to meet with two of us. And it ended up being close to eight people. But the point was, I was able to at least hear some of their concerns. And I brought up certain things to them because I brought what was given to us during the presentation. And I mentioned about the potential options and went down the whole group about these and got some answers from them. One that seemed, weren't too happy was where it says formalize, meet and confer, or expand city employees committee. We went also over the numbers that had been given us. And again, I heard they were inaccurate. I know there are so many cities, there are only a few that have moved forward. But there's good in what they're mentioning about the pay. A lot of my concerns was the flexibility. If we had, similar to what Councilman Shulman mentioned, if we had a pandemic and there's a demand from that union that we would continue to pay everybody X and Y, and we don't have it, do we end up in a situation like I heard from our city manager about having to lay off people where he was before? We are a city that tries not to lay off people as the best we can. So what I'm asking, are we going to have in place, you know, policies, procedures? And I wrote this word, a safety net. It is very important that we have some protection because we have a AAA bond reading. Is that going to impact that in any form? We need to know those questions. We need to, about the binding arbitration and getting legal people involved. We'll have to pay those attorneys. I know one person mentioned in one of the meetings that our attorneys already have had training in some form of this union arbitration. Do we use those people and spread them a little thinner? Or do we need to bring on additional people to make this happen? Another thing that was important, I think I've mentioned, the safety, we've done the steps. But what protection do we have for the city? Like I saw another city recently, and they said, oh, we're watching you all with this. Are you ready to go bankrupt? Another group says, you know, this is so important for your citizens. Because this impacts not only one group, it impacts across color, across ethnicity. And sometimes you will have people like a teacher not treated as well. And they don't have anyone to go to. So of course, I want to talk to the teachers. I could talk to one of the school board and say, how are you on this issue? And they say, oh, we're not touching this yet. To find out that their board has to approve for the teachers. So we are in almost like a test, like you saw the head trial test that they're doing in this other, of making these decisions. And the most important part about it is that we make it, do it right. Because it's sad, as people become a little bit more aggressive, you got to do this, you got... We want people to calm down, give us a chance to look at it. This is why, no matter who have talked to me, I said I had not made a stance because I'm learning. I'm educating and I'm writing the pros, the cons. We're aware people need more pay in some areas. We have taken a step. We meet and talk with some people on the street and they said, we love working here. We've been 20 years, 30 years. But the main thing, like Councilman Taylor mentioned, taking care of their family. So how can we come to a compromise with our city if we move forward on this? And we want to be not biased about certain things. Because some people feel, well, my hands are tied, I'm here now. I better move forward. But we don't need to have that kind of feeling. We need to be comfortable that we're going to address this for the best of our citizens, for the best of safety. The fire, we've realized several things has happened to them, but we've also taken steps to prevent. So it's bringing everything to the table and looking at it. And it's a stance that I'm taking, just listening. So by April 30th, I can make my vote and for the public to know, nobody has paid me to make any decisions in any way. Because I've heard all of that. We're just moving forward. We're listening. And if I'm comfortable with what I'm hearing, I'll move forward with it. But give me the chance. I've read books. I even got a chance to talk to other, you know, city people. But those are my concerns, is that we have a safety net in place. We are flexible on both ends. Because we have to compromise with union, with city, council people to come to a decision and not just be pushed. We cannot do this with fear, but being open. Because this not only affect us, but it will affect the generations to come. Whatever decision we make, it impacts many others. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I think we have before us a real watershed moment in the life of our city. The center of the table has been on the council the longest, and we've seen a lot of things happen. And one of the major things that we've been able to do for their city is to have flexibility. Because things happen, things change. We had the Great Recession of 2008. And other cities around us were laying off people. Now, we didn't give any raises, but nobody lost their job. And our employees really, really were happy that everybody got to keep their jobs. And we had to do that for a couple of years, to do that, to keep everybody the same. And with the pandemic that we all just went through, nobody lost their jobs. Now, we've also had to be flexible when things happen. We have emergencies come up. We have storms. We have, all of a sudden, we found that we've had things that we have to act quickly on. We have to have the funding and the flexibility to do that. There's only one person at this city, at this table, that has experienced collective bargaining. And I think when we're ready to hear from you, Mr. DeHaene, your experience in Pittsburgh, excuse me, Cincinnati, sorry, I have Pittsburgh. Cincinnati is going to be really, really important to us. Because one thing I know, he had to lay off 1,700 people because the collective bargaining, the union folks wouldn't compromise on their raises. I'm speaking out of turn. They wouldn't compromise on the raises. So he had to lay off 1,700 people. They lost their jobs. Eventually, he had to bring them, he got to bring them back. But it wasn't right away. And that hasn't ever happened in this city. We are one governor away from them being able to strike. I've been in New York City where the trash has been piled up on the sidewalks because they were on strike. We've seen on television where teachers have been on strike and didn't go into the classrooms. I would hope that would never happen in this city. And then I have always been extraordinarily supportive of our personnel. I was on the school board. I was always there, from the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers to everyone, teachers, aides. Because they're the ones who get the job done. They're the ones who make us look good. And the same thing in our city. And I think we've always tried to do the very best that we could. We had compression as a problem for years. And we kept throwing millions of dollars into trying to fix compression. I think we finally did the best we could with the step plan. And you said that it was not going to be over, that we're going to have to continue to do that. And that's what we've continued to try to have the best that we could do for our employees and have the best working conditions. Now, can we do better? Probably can. Speaking with Mayor Alexander of Norfolk, who, of all cities, you would think that they would have gone with collective bargaining. But they looked at it really hard, and they decided to do the meet and confer. Talking to him, in one conversation, he told me three times that collective bargaining could bankrupt us. It's kind of a scary thought, especially at the time. We have got so many needs in this city. We're looking at how to save some money so we can get our roads built, our schools done, flooding projects. A great article in the paper today about the flooding projects and how they doubled in price. And then we know we just got the Parks and Rec bill of how far behind we are. We have so many needs. And I'm just, I'm concerned that we're going to go so far that we can't bring it back in. I'd rather see us take baby steps and try to see, well, let's try the meet and confer and see how that works. And then analyze it and then see, maybe if it's not where we want it to be, then maybe... And we might get good results from it and think, okay, well, maybe we can go up to the next step. But also worried about all the employees who are not going to be in these collective bargaining events. How are they going to feel? I know there's a lot of times that they, if they're not public safety or they're not one of the select groups, that they sort of feel left out. And I'm sure Manager DeHaene has seen that. And we do this, I think they're going to feel even more left out of the picture. So at some point, I really would like for our wonderful city manager to talk about what he experienced there. I know the costs that you talked about, those are startup costs for maybe one unit. We're looking at maybe five coming forward. It's going to be expanded. But I think it's more of a cost than that. I think there's the loss of flexibility. And we don't really know what it's going to cost us. And so I have a lot of concerns. And this is going to be a really major decision that we have to make.
Thank you. Patrick?
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you. First, I just want to say is that I know this is a divisive issue. But I also used to say to all the folks and a lot of my folks that are sitting over there that when you get promoted to captain, you put on the gold bars. And then you go to battalion and district and on up. It's easy if everything is black and white, right? It's real simple. You don't really need the officers, you wouldn't really need us. Patrick and the folks would run it and be just fine, right? But as you move up, the water gets murkier and the yes and no's become cloudier until you get up to the chief level and you're really swimming in the dark. And us is even less than that. So that's what we're trying to do here. I understand this is scary to some people. I'm sorry about that. I just would like to say, it's troublesome to me when I hear scare tactics as far as why not to do it instead of using empirical data. So I'm going to go through a few things here, some of what y'all have said and some of what I've put together. For transparency, I was raised by a longshoreman, ILA 970. My father-in-law was Bell Atlantic, both for 35-plus years. They weren't rich men. But we grew up in Woodstock. So the notion that that's going to make a big difference is just that a notion. My father-in-law ended up retiring to the eastern shore for the rest of his life. So, you know, it's not a money grab here. It's just not. But anyway, I'm going to go through a few bullets. As Chris has said a few times, Councilman Taylor, just give me a few minutes here. I'm going to be a minute on this one. I mean, it's that important to me. One of the studies from the human resources group, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact title, but it's the, not our human resource, but the... Thank you, ma'am. A retention of just 3%. If we increased our retention of 3%, would be a $1 million roughly save to our hiring each year. So that right there would cover any cost that we would incur. I thought that was an important number. We had 622 employees in 2022 leave. So if we just took 20 or 30 of them, that would be, and you did the whole hiring process, you'd be somewhere around $4.5 million that we would be talking about saving in addition to. So these are real numbers. These are not manufactured. And as Stacy is sitting over there, I'm a firefighter now. I'm not giving you empirical to the dime numbers, all right? So these are just giving us clues. One of the things that I know rubbed some of us a little wrong the other night during the open mic or the discussion was when somebody referred to the folks that were the union leaders as union bosses. I thought that was a little disingenuous, but I actually don't see a problem with it. That's what they are. They're the boss of the union, just like I was the boss of the fire department. You know what I mean? It's not a bad thing. Sometimes it was meant for a negative connotation, but I didn't really think it was. But anyway, they were talking about salaries and they inflated extreme inflation of what... It's all right.
Imitation is the greatest form.
Hey, yes, remain, that's good. I didn't know I sounded like that. You messed me up, ma'am. Okay, so here we go. I'll pick it up. One, two, three. I have to do this all the time when I was shooting the videos for the fire department, right? The bloopers were hilarious. Anyway, the salaries. When we talk about salaries for these union bosses, union presidents, they're built on what the union membership is. Max Captain Ganano in the fire department, Union President Ganano's salary from the union is pittance compared to what was quoted. And they will never go any higher because their union will not be in the $100,000. So to compare them to the auto workers and the other is just garbage. That's not what we should be doing. They won't be anywhere near that. Max's, Lucky's, Kathleen's, they all spoke, right? It will not happen. Also, a couple of other things that I think should be mentioned is, you know, I can speak for the IFF, is they also employ a cancer doc. And he's not on there to do litigation. He's on there to help do cutting edge, like the gallery test that we paid for and we're so proud, you know, to be a part of. So there's a lot of good that comes out of this. It's not all money. The other thing is, is that this is a big one for me, is that what ends up happening and a lot of the numbers that are thrown out as red meat is that, you know, GM and Ford, they pay their COO $27.5 million. And you got a line person that's making $40,000. Well, yeah, that's going to cause a problem. But there's nobody in the city's unions or any of them, I don't care what city you go to, that's going to make a comparable salary to the city manager or to the fire chief or the police chief or anybody else. It's using a very different, as Councilman Taylor said again, that is definitely, I hadn't heard kiwis before, but apples and kiwis, that's not even apples and oranges, the difference. The money is not the same what it is. So please, please don't mix that up. And as well, the unions here are completely voluntary. They are not mandatory. I was a member of two unions. I was local 970 and a firefighter at the same time. There is a difference between the two, between a private and public union. Very, very different. They're not the same. But now, to speak for a second about the locals, the longshoreman, ILA 970, ILA 1248, ILA 1970, that's three of your main. And then you have your, I'm drawing a blank, your Teamsters, right? That's who makes up your port. It's well over 5,000 people, y'all, that live right here in your town. And I'll tell you this, a large majority of them are Republican. And I'll tell you this, a large majority of them are Republicans and they're in a union. So I don't understand the extreme bipartisism that this is bringing. It, it kind of befuddles me. I have, I have more family and, yes, ma'am, I have, there is more than one person here that's been a part of collective bargaining and the contracts, I was there a part of it for five years. So I've seen it. I don't understand how at least 70% of local 970 lives in Virginia Beach or Chesapeake, the two cities. And I'd say an overwhelming majority, because a lot of them are my family and friends, are Republicans. So I'm just a little befuddled that this is such a bipartisan stigmatism on this. I don't understand it. But anyway, salaries, as, again, as Mr. Taylor was talking about doing a salary survey, I can't, I can't give you the numbers that we were quoted last time as compared to this time. But I can tell you, if Virginia Beach, and I'm using the fire department stats that, that Captain Ganano gave us, and even if they're not 100% accurate and we're using slightly different hours and stuff like that, you could, you could adjust miniscule one way or the other. Virginia Beach is still not anywhere near number one, not even close. Okay, so who's that fall to? A man at the open mic spoke about leadership and he was kind of talking about the directors and it struck me as kind of odd. It was like, okay, the leaders of the departments are certainly doing their job. That leadership falls right here. That's where that money comes from. That's not coming from the, from the directors. So I don't know who he was talking about necessarily about leadership. It was a bit confusing to me. But the bottom line is, is that it's, if it's going to come from anywhere, it's got to come from right here. And that's what I would argue is, is that collective bargaining does for us, is once every three years or so, and I'd like for you to speak about that, if you're going to speak about the other stuff, about what helps with the contract, is, is that you negotiate one time every three to five years, depending on what you want it to be. So it's not any more work, it's less work. And when the contract is set, it is set as far as what the amount is going to be. And it's normally not some outrageous amount of money. We've talked about the step plan and what we've done and everything and how it was $30 million one time. That's because we were behind. That's why that had to be made up, not because we were on path. If we were on task, what'd we have last year at the oceanfront, y'all? $1.4 billion come in and our city is not number one for pay from the account clerk to the city manager. It's not just public safety, it's everybody should be at that level. It bothers me to my core. It always has. And I can speak to each individually of you about stories to tell you why I feel this way. It's just, just downright wrong. But I can guarantee you, if your public safety salaries are not at the number one, the rest of your city's not even close, buddy. It's just not. So anyway, what I would like for you to hear is, is that I've used it many times now, is that the sausage starts getting made down here and it comes out down there or vice versa. I don't mean that disparagingly, whichever way we're doing it, but you know what I'm saying. Down the table. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for that. So, but my point is, is that what ends up happening is, is when it ends up down here, roads, parks, tourist stuff ends up taking the place of our city employees. So that's why I'm saying if they get a seat at the table at the, at the front, then that will not happen. It will take care of that process because here inevitably there's a dedication, there's a park, there's something that gets in the way of giving our city employees or keeping them at number one. I know we've said it, we were during my career, but we haven't been for a long time. So I think that's why you would look at collective bargaining as being a process. I just said that. I've heard about strikes and stuff like that. You know, we could do a sick out right now. Max could call 10 folks who could call 10 folks, it could happen any day. They could do a sick out tomorrow and cripple our department. Has it ever happened? Nope, not in my 35 years, never happened. Has it happened in other cities? Don't know, don't care, because it hasn't happened in our city. And this is a city that I'm worried about. And I have faith in the employees. My son would take a bullet as opposed to calling out sick and having something happen in who's, who's over off of, who's by Virginia Beach General Hospital, who's district worth? He would, he would no longer call out sick and have something happen to your wife or your child or have something happen to your house. It's not in their nature to do that, y'all. It's just wrong to even, to even insinuate that in our city. In my opinion, it's just disrespectful. Finding arbitration only means the manager recommends the contract that the agents have come to. The decision still lies here. If we say no to what they bring forward, then they go back to the table. And if it can't be done, then it's brought in with an arbitrator. So that's, that's what we're talking about happening here. It's not taking our power away. It's just getting the, the employees at the front of the table instead of at the end. I already talked about the three-year. Oh, the task force that you put together, right? That was y'all's task force. I wasn't here yet. Wonderful group. Five of them, five of them spoke in favor of it. One of them was your, your deputy city manager that was protect, was part of the security detail with Frankie as far as being the, the people that protected you. And he spoke eloquently of why he supported it. Your, your retired beloved fire, police chief, oops, sorry Jim, called him a fire chief, but is, is that he spoke in favor of it. Your, your three union presidents or your two union presidents, and then your teachers' association spoke in favor of it. We had a rabbi and an interfaith speak in favor of it. I mean, what else do you need to hear as far as from the citizens? I don't need to hear anything else personally. I'm almost done. Talked about your market salary. Last thing, well, two, couple more things. One, meet and confer. We meet and confer right now. That's what we do. We are doing meet and confer right to this day. All Max does is come to each one of us and try to get us to agree on adding some money to something or getting something done. All that would change is we would be able to go, nope, nope, talk to Patrick. Patrick would do it and have to bring it forward. And then if Patrick didn't want to bring it forward, it wouldn't, and then Max would go back to talking to us. It's, it's not a, it's not a clean process, y'all. It's, it's dysfunctional. It reminds me of a small-town way of doing business instead of a metropolitan city, which a lot of us don't believe we are, but we are, you know? So that's, that's why I'm dead against meet and confer and will not vote for it if it, if it comes down as an option. I'm saying that upfront. Lastly, a couple of other things that were said. Y'all can help, I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it out loud. During the pandemic, did we lay anybody off? Did we cut anybody's salary? No. Okay. It was a damn pandemic, y'all. So can we stop talking about downturns and negatives and everything else? If we have one, there'll be a decision made to go to arbitration or have a discussion. But in our recent past, I don't even know how long back we'd have to go. We've never had it happen where we didn't. But if we did and we've operated in good faith up until that point, I don't know why they wouldn't operate in good faith after that point. So to talk about all that, I just, I just don't agree with it. And then you can say, can we do better? Well, yeah, we can do better. We could have kept us in the front the whole time, but that hasn't happened, which is why when this body leaves, collective bargaining will be in place to ensure that we really do care about our employees and we're going to move to take care of them. So, and then other cities, bringing up other cities, very different than what I've heard from Norfolk. What, what I've heard is that it was not as unified front as far as coming forward to have a discussion about it. And I've talked to, I'm not going to name the names, but I've talked to two or three of, in their upper level that said that was the reason. They didn't feel it was put together as well as what we've had put in front of us. So thank you very much for hearing me.
Patrick, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll just answer the questions that was posed to me. I'll say it's a council choice. There's pros and cons to it. There's opportunity cost to it. It's why you all get paid the big bucks and why the people elect y'all to be the tenants to represent the public. You all are stuck with making these very difficult choices. There's pros and cons to it, right? It's hard for me to predict, does it cost you more? Because I don't know what we, what we would negotiate and what y'all would approve in the contract yet. And from my time at Virginia Beach, y'all have been the most generous council I've ever witnessed in terms of your resources that you give to your employees. And I'd say that to anybody. I would say it, that I think this council is generous in terms of what it gives to its employees. Yeah, I do. From my time I've been here, I've never seen, for example, the pandemic year, no raises were given, right? And then the next budget I worked on with this council, the council gave several bonuses throughout that year, then gave an eight and a half percent increase to public safety and a 5% increase to our general workforce. And after that, it funded a market salary survey and then implemented a step plan against my recommendation, right? This council, when it wants to and when it has the resources, is pretty generous to this, to this employee base. I think the council's faced with a tremendous amount of responsibilities and obligations that are limiting that ability right now. For example, flood protection, stormwater, school modernization, a whole host of other things that are competing for the resources that you all have to put towards a myriad of different resources. It does, collective bargaining does limit your flexibility, right? Currently, right now, we enjoy the benefit of unilateral decision-making. Councilmember Hutchinson is right. We do do meet and confer now. Max Lucky can say, I meet with them and I, I listen to them, I hear them out, you know, and if I think something's a good idea, I bring it forward. If I think something's a bad idea, I don't bring it forward. They meet with you all and they articulate their concerns as well. What they've articulated to me is that they would like to be able to make sure that their words matter and gets indoctrinated, some kind of agreement that is memorialized and we all have to stick by, right? If you get, if you take collective bargaining, you do limit your flexibility. The vice mayor mentioned the situation in Cincinnati. Cincinnati had probably nine or 10 collective bargaining units. When it was time for us to navigate the, the pandemic and there was a need to not activate the raises that were required in the contract, we had to go back to the bargaining units and the bargaining units decided, which is their prerogative under collective bargaining, to vote in not taking those pay cuts, right? So we had to balance the budget, we're required, like Virginia Beach is required to balance the budget. So we had to balance the budget and we had to lay off the staff. To Councilmember Hutchinson's point, there's a certain benefit that you get with collective bargaining as well. You get stability, right? Every year, you all get inundated, I get inundated from Max Lucky and a whole bunch of other labor associations asking for raises and asking for plus-ups to the contract or asking the plus-ups on pay and benefits. If you're in a collective bargaining, you could tell Max Lucky, whoever, see you in three years. We already agreed to what we were going to agree to. When that comes up for negotiation, you can negotiate it. It's pros and cons. Council, you got to balance where you all feel you all should go on this one, you know? But Mark and I will always be here to answer any questions that you all have to kind of make sure that y'all are eyes wide open, eyes wide open as much as possible with whatever y'all decide.
Okay. Chris, did you have something then, Huch?
Yes, just for the manager. Mr. Manager, how many employees were in Cincinnati versus Virginia Beach?
About 6,700. And there's about 7,500 here.
What was your total budget during your time?
Cincinnati didn't have schools, so it's about, probably about 1.3 billion was the city budget.
About half of ours with no schools, because no schools.
It's the same as ours. So schools is about, yeah, so we're 2.5, you know, so Cincinnati's about 1.3 billion. Schools were a separate independent agency.
And then total population for Cincinnati?
The city metro, the city, internal city was around 330,000, but about 3.5 metro.
All right, thank you, sir.
And then Barbara.
So, Mr. Dehaney, and Ms. Rose Hammond, this is for, for you, because you, you asked, you were saying about what he had asked you, so you'll see here in a second. Is, is that that, that money, when you were talking about how, how good the money was right after the pandemic, was that because of ARPA funds that we were able to do some of that work?
ARPA funds did the one-time bonuses. ARPA and CARES Act went did the one-time bonuses. I think what happened was because of this council's foresight, anticipating the pandemic, the council froze CIP projects, made reductions and made cuts, not knowing what the world would give, right? And then once, once we realized the ARPA funds and in the same time as well, I think we started being able to collect online sales tax or something like that. Those fiscal decisions on top of those create a period of time when the council had the ability, because of inflation, to reduce taxes and create significant surplus, surplus in dollars. And what the council did was they put it in their employees.
Okay, Barbara.
We, we keep just talking about salaries and step plan and so forth, but there's a whole lot more to being employed for any company or the government than salary. Can you give us, and I guess it varies depending on different positions in different departments, the breakdown of how the salary is? And then, of course, we get the benefits. And I know that for, this will be, I guess, the second or third year that we've kept the health insurance, we've picked up the difference so that there's not been an increase. So what about insurance, health insurance, life insurance, retirement? And I think different departments can retire at different points. Can we get an overall breakdown of all of the benefits with, with the job so that we're not just talking about salaries and just the simple looking at what does this city pay? But there's other things as well that I think are really important. And there's also a lot to do with, under what circumstances could someone be let go with the government that's different, I think, from private sector? Private sector, we had a bad year, I'm sorry, you've got to go. I know how that goes. So I think there are a lot of other things that we need to be looking at as well as just the salary.
Okay, Josh, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wrote something down as we were talking around the table and, and, and Mr. Manager, while you were speaking, we were kind of honed in on wages and benefits. And to Councilwoman Henley's point, and frankly, you know, it communicated me, reflected by, you know, what, what I've been hearing from workforce, what I've been hearing from the, the association representatives, is it's not all about the money. It's about, and I've, I've had anecdotes, you know, you know, recounted to me about individualized situations where, where there's a policy interpretation that might go one way for one person and another way for another person. Where there are situations, you know, that, that involve opportunities that may arise in terms of transfers that may go to somebody or not somebody else. And so I, what, what I, what I think I've heard from folks who have, have spoken to me about this issue is, sure, I mean, it's about wages and benefits, but it's less about the dollars and cents as it is about just taking care of the people. And, I mean, I, I know we bend over backwards. I'm sure we do. I'm sure we try. I'm sure, you know, we, we, every, every opportunity or every, you know, benefit of the doubt is given, but, but I, I, I get the sense that there is a feeling that there are, that there are rules of the road missing. And that, that certainty in terms of workplace conditions, grievances, some of the quality of life, aspects of work are, are really what they're talking about. And I, I just want to kind of put that out there because I know we're really focused on, and as we should be, focused on, you know, I mean, that, that's our, that's our greatest responsibility is, is approving a budget and being good stewards of the taxpayer, you know, taxpayer money. But I think it's more, there's more to it than just that.
Amelia?
You picked up what I was going to mention about the quality of life, because I mean, someone gave example of someone being treated one way, but a fear of coming up because they felt there's nobody to back them. But, you know, like in the movies, there's the union that will now come and it will have that comfort that somebody is protecting them. I know we also have grievances committees here in the city as well. And what else I wanted to And what else I wanted to ask you, Patrick, you mentioned about the whole system, how we have foredoing our salaries that you will have to put in some other. Can you explain that a little bit more?
That one was Councilmember Dr. Ross Hammond. That was related primarily to the old system, right? So the old system is behind the times and would have to have had a significant amount of modifications. The new system that council has funded, we haven't started yet. So if council starts with collective bargaining, we can program the new system for collective bargaining. However, if we start to implement the new system and if we have implemented a new system and council then says do collective bargaining, we'll then have to go back and modify the system to create different modules for collective bargaining.
To collective bargaining, but getting everything in place. From what I heard, it will be at least two years, not something that will happen tomorrow. Can you confirm that?
I think we've seen about 12 to 18 months, right? Like for the cities up north, in Northern Virginia, they're taking them about 12 to 18 months to, from the time council adopts the ordinance directing the staff to negotiate a contract with collective bargaining, it's taken about 12 to 18 months to go through that process.
And if we to adopt this, of course, as I mentioned about the safety net protections, the ordinance, we need also articles to accompany that, that we will both sit to the table, come to a compromise. And one thing that I'm glad Councilman Fireman mentioned.
I take that as a compliment, man.
It is a compliment because you all do wonderful work. But what you mentioned that I hadn't heard from anybody else was the three years, the contract. I've met with many, but they haven't talked, that three years you set something up, nobody else can muddy that water until the next three years. That was new. You see all of, that's why you see I'm collecting information. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, if I could close out.
No, this is a very important decision we have because the decision is going to affect a lot of taxpayers in perpetuity, one way or the other. And let me just say, on July 1st, I'll be celebrating my 20th year on the city council. I was the last of the May elections. And just to tell you a personal story about why I have become a champion. Prior to my election back then, you know, I was on a ride-along with the police department when a pizza delivery guy ran a red light and T-boned a car and two six-year-olds were killed. And I was on that scene for about four hours. I watched fire, police, and EMS, you know, work hand in hand. And it was right before Thanksgiving and it was, temperature dropped. And then after that, we went to Azar's restaurant and I saw the humanity of all the public service people that were involved, you know, the emotion that they went through. But what I saw at that accident scene was professionalism. And I'll tell you what, it won me over. And I have been a champion of public service for 20 years. I've been at graduations, I've been at hero ceremonies, retirements, funerals, you know, and I fully understand, you know, what's going on. I guess, you know, what really concerns me, and the other thing I've seen over the 20 years is a seamless continuum of leadership, you know, both with the fire and police. And as a matter of fact, Harry Dyzel, when I first got elected, was my mentor, entor-mentor, if you know Harry. And, you know, he really took me under the wing and explained a lot of the things that go along. But once again, I guess, you know, the real concern I have right now is the timing of this. As we go forward with one of our most challenging budgets since I've been here for 20 years. And I appreciate, you know, the need to make course corrections. But as I go around, and I talk to a lot of fire folks, I talk to a lot of police folks, you know, I see them. You see the more and more police in the Walmarts now and you see, you know, the fire department guys coming out and you talk to them. A great group of people. You take a look at our fire training facility, second to none, and you see all the training that they constantly have to go through and the equipment that they need to do their jobs and to keep them safe. And I think what we're being asked now during a very difficult time is to go into dark, uncharted waters that we're not aware of where we're going to wind up landing if we go ahead and pursue, you know, collective bargaining at this point. And, you know, because once again, you talk to other cities. And I can tell you, I had a meeting with all the mayors of 757, you know, locally. And they have grave concerns about implementing collective bargaining for a number of reasons. And, but once again, I think we have to proceed with a caution. And you know, the thing is, you know, a lot of thing, you know, Hutch brought up the partisanship. A lot of, believe it or not, it was Governor Doug Wilder was the one that actually closed the door on, you know, public engagement years ago. And actually, believe it or not, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt had concern about public unions. You know, coming from New Jersey, they have a lot of public unions up there. And, you know, really created a really hard fiscal time and challenges. But the thing is, we don't know where this is going to wind up bringing us. And, you know, and, you know, the thing is, can we at least get a fix for now? We appreciate the programs, we value all the things. You know, if we were to say that maybe, you know, collective bargaining is not appropriate now, I think what can we actually accomplish? And what Kenny Alexander told me, and, you know, and Hutch, I respect your skepticism on meet and confer, but Kenny talked about enhanced meet and confer, which mean more formalized meetings, not the informal meetings, and that he would get back to the council and tell folks what we're trying to do. And the point is, though, if we can, at least for a couple of years, you know, try the meet and confer to see if it works and rather put money into, you know, payroll systems and also hiring personnel, you know, maybe we can use that money to take a look at the, you know, the personnel shortage that Chief Privates talked about. And the other thing, you know, somebody mentioned that, you know, Portsmouth, you know, give it a little time to see how they do, what can we learn from their best practices and what's going forward? And the thing is, I think no matter what, on the 30th, that we somehow walk away with a win-win. You know, this doesn't have to be, you know, divisive issue if we, if we get our, you know, collegiality and collaboration going and we all understand the moving parts. But, you know, the thing is, at this point with a budget that has a lot of challenges, to say the least, trying to find a balance. You know, because once again, you know, CIP, you know, CIPs are on a different budget schedule than, you know, payroll and personnel. And the thing is, our infrastructure, if you read the front page of the pilot today and talk about that our flood bond referendum has now doubled. We're going to have to look at schools. And we talk about $991 million in unfunded CIPs. And, you know, I think the biggest challenge that we have as a collective is finding that balance on how do we keep running as a city? And, you know, the thing is, you know, I really think that if we take a real good look and find out the particular problems that are of concern, obviously salaries, but also working conditions and the ideas of every employee in this city feeling valued. And, you know, the thing is, sometimes you got to be careful with collective bargaining that you don't put people into isolated camps that actually wind up competing against each other. We got to try to prevent that. But the thing is, you know, my recommendation is that, you know, let's take the next couple of weeks. We got a public hearing on the budget tomorrow. I'm sure people will talk about that. And then next week, there is another public budget, and even the night of the vote, there will be another public hearing. You know, so the thing is, you know, you know, I think we're going to have the data points that we need to come to a decision. But whatever decision, you know, the thing is, as long as it's in the best interest of those concerned. You know, I'll tell you what, when you think about recently, the ODU, Old Dominion University Quality of Life report that came out, we came out as a top city. We're 85% of the people in this city were favorable or very favorable. We are one of the best managed. But the thing is, I think Hutch brings up some things. We got some things that we have to address. And I think if we go to enhanced, you know, meet and confer, if that's the direction, that's something that we can do to put the wheels in motion to take care of those problems. You know, maybe get into a better, you know, fiscal situation, you know, when inflation starts dying down. And then also learn, you know, from the, I guess it's Fairfax and Portsmouth and some of the other cities that are out there. So, but once again, I appreciate the tenor of the discussion and it's obviously going to continue, but I think it was a very, and I thank you all for the, you know, your tenor today. Appreciate it. All righty. And now I guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, the first item will be a briefing from L.J. Hanson regarding commercial vehicle parking. This is an issue that comes up in a lot of the city council districts. And we typically have a lot of questions and concerns from your constituents, but also as well from you as council members. And we figured it was best to give you guys a quick overview of some of the challenges and options available to council.
Hey, I'll tell you what, how about a five-minute break, Patrick?
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
No, you didn't do it. I just wanted to.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my privilege this afternoon to talk to you about commercial vehicle parking on city streets. This is a topic that comes up pretty frequently in the three years that I have been here with the city of Virginia Beach. I picked a case study, but what we're talking about today is pretty much universal. The issue of overnight commercial vehicle parking, like I said, it comes up pretty regularly. One thing I would stress is each situation's a little bit different. But typically, it, there's a couple of common elements, such as being adjacent to a commercial area and a residential area. That's usually what causes the friction. And to that end, it kind of puts staff in a place in between. One thing I wanted to point out, though, for this, for this presentation, there's no request of City Council, we're not asking you to make any decisions. This is really just a briefing for you to understand some of the elements that are at play. Some of the streets that we, that we have had requests on to look into would be like Lampel, Southern Boulevard, Centerra Way, Broad Street, and Beasley Drive. Those are just some that came right to my mind as putting this together. So I just want to let you know, this is a citywide issue. And again, I chose Lampel as a case study because it kind of, it's pretty easy to illustrate the issues. And so for the next couple of slides, I'm going to be talking exclusively about Lampel, and then go back to the broad, general nature. With regard to Lampel, the citizens from the Birchwood community have been in contact with the city for a while, requesting that we do something about the commercial vehicles that are parked on Lampel. We continue to work with the community and with the police department to try to enforce what we can and to help them to understand. The area specific to Lampel is illustrated in the map shown below. You can see there's a strong B2 presence right in the middle between Virginia Beach Boulevard and Lampel, and Rosemont Road is on the right-hand side of the screen. North, west, and east are all residential. So you have a B2 presence, it's right in the middle of a bunch of residential, and this is kind of the area where we start to see the issues. It's just a color picture so that you can see it. But even from this color picture, which is taken from the city's orthography, you can see that there are commercial vehicles that are parked on the south side of Lampel in this picture, and I'm going to show you several more pictures. And so you can imagine that the residents that live in the Birchwood community are not fond of driving past this on the regular. And we can appreciate it from a visual standpoint. However, there are some aspects to it that really are more than just the visual component. Because it's addition, because it's adjacent to the B2 community, that is not considered a residential street. It is, it's a collector's street, actually. It's 36 feet wide, so it is much wider than a normal residential street would be. So it is more than adequate to accommodate the parking and traffic in both directions. It has a very low accident history. In this, in this particular case, it has four accidents in five years. We reviewed the police reports for each of those four accidents. Every one of them cited a distraction. Most of them were sun or glare. One of them was a cellphone. So none of those accidents were caused by vehicles or anything coming from between the commercial vehicles. So back to the issue at large, what can be done? This is often, this is oftentimes a question, what exists today, what allows us to do, what can police take, what actions can police take under these conditions? And so the first part, parking, removal of vehicles in a general state. Number one there, if a vehicle is parked in such a way that it impedes the flow of traffic. And when I say a vehicle in this particular case, I'm also talking about a trailer, part of a semi-trailer, the cab or whatever. It also can be removed if it's left unattended for more than 10 days. And that's on any public property. So that doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean it has to be on a road, it could be in a park, it could be located at the municipal center, wherever is a, wherever the public property is located. It can also be removed if it's been abandoned. And abandoned means that it doesn't have a current license plate or a valid safety inspection decal, and it's been there for four days without being moved. So four days would require the additional components of not having a valid license plate or an inspection sticker. 10 days if it has those. Additionally, parking of commercial vehicles themselves are restricted inside of residential areas. And this is, this is, I think, where sometimes the friction comes. Were these vehicles to be parked in Birchwood, that would not be, that would not be an issue. We could cite them and have them removed if need be. However, this is not a residential street on Lampel. It's adjacent to residential streets, but it is not a residential street. Additionally, parking and storage of recreational equipment, if you remember from one of the slides, there was an RV that was parked out there. RVs are not to be parked in the public right-of-way for more than three hours. Again, these are all existing codes, these are all currently enforceable by the Virginia Beach Police Department. Additionally, the Director of Public Works, me, I do have some authority to restrict parking, and I also have the ability to restrict the time of parking. It is important to note, though, the language that says "general parking shall be permitted" is not my opinion, and I have conferred with the city attorney's office, nor is it the opinion of the city attorney, that general parking allows me to create any type of a sub-parking system. In other words, I do not have the ability to say you can't park motorcycles, or you can't park green cars or red cars or commercial vehicles. That does not seem to be within my authority. And the reason that I feel confident that that's the case is because when you go back to this one, "commercial vehicles," it defines what a commercial vehicle is, and it says specifically "commercial vehicles," whereas in this one, it is very clear that it says "general parking." And so I feel confident that that is not an authority that I have at this point. There is, however, a state code that we do not utilize. This state code, I think, would be applicable, could be applicable. I'm not sure that it's necessarily appropriate in this setting, but it is a possibility for council to create an ordinance whereby we could set a limit that for no more than two hours can a vehicle, a commercial vehicle be parked adjacent to a commercial business area. And that would certainly meet the threshold of what we're talking about in most of these cases. To that end, I don't have anything else to present to you. Again, this was, this was purely an informational meeting. I'm trying to get you back on schedule. I know we're running a little bit behind, but I do have time for any questions, and we'll field any.
Okay. Any questions at all? Amelia, Michael.
About the commercial vehicle. As you know, off of Baker Road, going back, we have sometimes five, six of these used. I know there's a commercial, you know, strip along there, but it's not far from where we have a lot of apartments, kids going to school in the morning, and it literally locks. Are we able to use those two hours?
And again, that's, that's part of the question, right? So in the event that, in the event that I were to use my authority on Lampel, or on Baker, or on some of the other streets that I named at the beginning of this, that does create a different dynamic, right? One, we're telling the, we're telling the operators and owners of the commercial vehicles that this is not something that we want you to do, and that that's understandable. But if it's adjacent to a business district, the question then is, where should they park? And I think that creates kind of an issue. The other thing is, if you recall, Baker is very similar to Lampel in this regard, the width of the street. So if we took, let's say we took all those trucks off, one of the concerns that I have is if we took all the parking off that street and made it no parking, that we would be creating this extra-wide street that would be very inviting. Now the speeds, right now, we don't have speed issues on there. But we take all the trucks, all the parking off, that might create a whole different issue. And so there really are a lot of things that we, that we can look at with regard to Baker. I'll add it to my list of sites to, to look at, and I'll certainly confer with you afterwards. But I just want to make, make sure that you all understand that were we to just take unilateral action, it does have some consequences in there, and there's some negatives in there.
It's more the side street, not Baker itself, but you know, there's a whole shopping area right near the side street.
Okay.
That has these problems.
We'll look into it, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hutch.
Me first?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, then Hutch. My apologies. I had raised my own hand. LJ, and for the body, I just want to share, when I joined the council in 2019, this is one of the first issues that I remember being brought to my attention as a council member, the commercial vehicle parking in the Birchwood community. And so this has been going on for five years that I'm aware of. And the neighborhood is, and they are distressed from the emails that I have read and from the communications that I've received, the conversations I've had with the community members. And I think that they're looking and have been looking to this body to take action to ensure the beautification and safety of their neighborhood. And I think we should do it. I think we should take you up on your proposal, or at least, if not a proposal, suggestion that the council could make, adopt an ordinance that would provide more flexibility, because in some limited instances, we need to use it. Another example is like what Councilmember Ross Hammond said, and I'm not exactly familiar with that particular issue, but I have driven throughout your district, and I have seen commercial vehicles parked. And there is a balance between allowing, you know, hardworking people the chance to have access to their vehicles and other things, but also maintaining the beauty and the integrity and enjoyment of our neighborhoods. I know in District 3, we've had a lot of commercial vehicle parking, and many of them are hardworking people who it's, you know, inconvenient for them to park their vehicles somewhere else, but they have to. And because that's what the, what the law says, and they find accommodations for that. So I think the people of Birchwood need a relief, and I think we should do everything we can to provide it to them.
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Okay, Hutch, do you have something?
Sir, so the two-hour thing?
Yes.
You know, I wonder if, you know, sometimes the rules are made, and we don't always, like, figure out, is that what's best for everybody? You know, I'm not saying us, I know it's the state, but I guess we could extend, like, if somebody said, hey, I'm, I'm running by the house, I've got to go in four hours to go, you know what I mean? I wonder if it's two hours, four hours, six hours, is it overnight? I mean, I guess we could go up to two hours, they're allowed to do it, but if we wanted to make it a little more lax and enforce something that Councilmember Lucci's saying, or we could do that, right?
Yes, sir. So again, and I was, I apologize, I was trying to get you all back on schedule, so I may have cut my, cut some of my comments a little bit short. As Director of Public Works, I have the ability to set time limits. So one of the things I could do is I could say, no commercial vehicles between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, for instance. Or, or we could use the state's model, and you could say, not for more than two hours. But understand, with any one of those things, there are consequences, right? If, if we make it so that it's two hours, that would be my least, that would be my least preferential one, and the reason for that is it would require an incredible amount of work on part of the police department to go out and, and say, oh, this truck was here two hours ago, and now it's, now it gets a ticket. So I think that that would be, that would be very negative. The potential exists to create a no-parking area, but again, it would be no parking, not no commercial truck parking, it would be no parking between certain hours. That's certainly something that we could look at doing. But again, that has a consequence where I'm a little worried, what happens at 8 o'clock at night when there's no vehicles on this street? And, and then now we start getting complaints from the community of like, hey, all of a sudden, there's a racetrack out here, can you come put speed bumps? And, and we can't do that, right? Because this street is not a residential street. So we're going to get back to that, back to those issues. That's the concerns that I have, and just saying that there's always a, there's always a trade-off. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanson, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, any, any action has unintended consequences, tough issue, I get it. Related but unrelated, is I'm hearing concerns about aesthetics, a desire for beautification. I know a lot of these commercial corridors that have bought neighborhoods don't have adequate landscape buffers to shield the business end of the, of the commercial establishments from the neighborhood views. And I'm wondering, it doesn't solve the parking problem, but maybe we need to look at perhaps planting some trees, or doing something that, that, sure, they might still park there, but let's maybe help some of these neighborhoods look a little bit better and shield them from the, from the commercial views in areas where we have, you know, city, city right-of-way and appropriate space to do that.
Yes, sir, I hear you. There's something I can confer with Parks and Rec to talk about the potential for doing that. Again, that, this, this was really kind of, we use Lampel as a case study, so using, understanding where all the different localities are and how that might work would be different for each setting.
I'm thinking Broad Street in Aragona is a good example of that. Long straight stretch, a lot of, you know, just unsightly kind of conditions.
Gotcha.
And there is grass there.
Yep.
So things like that where, you know, it's going to happen, but let's maybe try and make it look a little bit nicer.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, you know, it's a problem that cities have. Thank you.
Well, sorry, Mayor, could I just get a better sense of where we are as a body in terms of addressing this situation? I'm just not clear if we have any direction coming from this.
Is there at least a recommendation of, you know, press?
Thank you very much. This is Lampel's in District 8. And one of my concerns, and I've heard, really spoken with these civic groups, and we go to the parks in that neighborhood, one of my concerns with taking action today without understanding some of the consequences is, there's a park at the end of the BJs. So now, if we say no parking on this street, where do we park when we go to drop our, when we go for a birthday party at the park? Are we going to get a fine? And most of the commercial vehicles are parking towards the other end behind Plaza Apartments, where there's a daycare. So I don't oppose this body taking action, and, but I do want to make sure that we don't inadvertently harm the community that is using, for instance, that specific park. And where do they park? Either in the commercial parking lot of Double Dollar Tree behind BJs, or they park along that street, which is somewhat dangerous, because that makes sure my kids get out on the curbside. So I support Councilmember Lucci bringing forth a little pressure for us to take action, but I think as it relates to Lampel, and I'm very supportive of the civically there, I just want to make sure we don't also then handicap or bootstrap or just make it so I'm getting 32,000 emails saying, I love going to this park, now I can't go to the park. Thank you, Councilman Taylor.
Yes, sir, and, and that has been part of the issue, the, the location of the park, the location of the daycare. If we, if we were to restrict parking on one side of the street, and they would move to the other side of the street, would might, which would actually move all the commercial vehicles closer to the neighborhood. All of that plays into that. And that, that was really the, the general tenor of what I hoped to convey today, to let you know that it's, there's very, there's very few simple answers. There are things that we can do, but they come with consequence. And again, there was no request for City Council to take any action today. This was really just an informational meeting to let you know that we are aware, and we are continuing to work through these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I understand that, and I certainly defer to the, to the district representative on this matter. And I'm not proposing that we take an action today, but what I, what I wanted to share is that they, that Civic League, as Mr. Taylor knows very well, has been dealing with this for at least five years, if not longer. And if I, if I lived there, and I own, you know, one of those homes that was directly adjacent to that BJ's, or lived near there, drove that street, or, you know, had family members, it's terrible. And, and I don't think, if I were a member of that Civic League, that I would be consider acceptable that we're, that we've been dealing with this for five years. And, you know, maybe we want to, maybe it's complex, and we want to kick the can down the road, but I don't. I want to help the neighborhood try to find some resolution.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good point. Good points. Very good point.
It's too long to wait five years.
Thank you. Moving on.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, we're about to begin the budget presentation, and the first presentation will be with Dr. Caitlin Padati, the Virginia Beach Health Director. She's going to give an overview of her 2425 budget presentation.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I think, do we have slides? Will I give you a moment? Perfect. Okay, so thank you all. It's a pleasure for Paul and I to be here today to talk to you about our proposed budget briefing. So starting at the beginning with our organization, as many of you are familiar, we have seven city FTEs across four divisions that I'll show you here in just a moment. But our total fiscal year 2425 budget is just over $4 million. And that is largely due to the fact that, as you all are probably familiar, we have an arrangement between the state and the city that we often refer to as our cooperative agreement to fund public health, whereby the state picks up 55% and the city matches 45%. So that's the bulk of the city funds that we receive there that you can see in blue. And then beyond that match, we are fortunate that we do receive support from the city for four specific areas. That's our Healthy Families Early Childhood Home Visiting Program, our Pediatric Dental Program, our On-Site Laboratory Services, and our Senior Services Support Program. So I'll take you through our proposed operating budget, and I'll start you at the bottom there, actually, where you'll see overall about an increase of 7.8%. Again, largely reflecting the increases that are associated with the overall cooperative budget agreements, so increases in things like staff salaries and rent. You'll also see that decrease in FTEs on the city. You'll also see that decrease in FTEs on the city side from eight to seven that I'll call out for you as we move up this table here. So again, moving up from the overall total and that local match line item, you'll see our Senior Services Support area staying largely the same. Embedded within that, which I apologize, should probably be pulled out into a different line item, is actually $71,000 that was focused on a clinic nurse role that we use really across our department clinic service activities. The reason you see this removed was to accommodate our budget targets. So separate from that, then, you'll see our laboratory costs increased a little bit as we got our two, and I'm happy to share, we've got our two full-time laboratory support folks on board. Also, a little bit of an increase to get some dental support, and I'm also very happy to share that we have hired a dental assistant, so we're very excited about that. And then our Healthy Families programming remaining largely stable there at the top. I know we're behind, so I won't take up too much time, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share very quickly a couple of key things we're working on. I think the last time I was here with you all, we talked about our Community Health Needs Assessment, and in particular, our Needs Assessment Survey. So thank you to all of you who helped share that, that did close two days ago, so we're in the process of doing that analysis, and we'll certainly be coming back to share with you what we heard from the community about our public health needs and priorities. I included again here a line about public health recovery and response. This was sort of initiated in my presentations as part of COVID, but as we all well know, public health does recovery in response for a lot of things, not just COVID. And I thought I would share here, if you haven't seen it, a really nice and recent documentary came out on PBS called The Invisible Shield, that really talks about the way that public health provides these kinds of services, not just for things like COVID, but for things like opioid misuse and the opioid epidemic. And then you'll see on there some of our other priorities that I've shared with you all on prior visits, particularly our efforts around workforce and infrastructure development through our CDC grant, and the highlights from the programs in our dental laboratory and Healthy Families programs that I shared. And then lastly, just wanted to give with you, or give to you a couple of nice updates that are pretty recent. So talking a lot about the role of public health and our importance in providing core foundational services, including immunizations to protect folks, including from things like meningitis. And I'm happy to tell you that we've seen a 19% increase in our routine vaccinations compared to last year, which is great. And we also conducted recently some back-to-school clinics. We were able to do 26 of those across our schools here in Virginia Beach, and saw a 61% increase in those vaccinations compared to this time last year. So really excited to have that opportunity to work in the city with the schools and help catch up kids and others on their immunizations. I also just wanted to highlight, in case you've seen it, the state of Virginia did release last week a notice of an increase in Nisseria meningitis cases. And just for your awareness, since June 2022, there have been 35 of those cases statewide, and 20, sorry, 36 of those cases statewide, 25 of them have been in the eastern region. And as public health does with all reportable conditions, we follow up on these by doing case investigations, helping to protect people who may have been exposed, but really, the very best protection is a strong prevention, which of course brings us back to vaccination. And then lastly, just wanted to note, many of you may have heard about our Aging in Place Pilot Program. This is a grant-funded program that we shared about at the recent Summit 55, talking about ways that public health can support some of our older populations by providing wraparound services. And this is a program that we're hopefully going to have a little bit more data for you on, probably around the end of the summer, that we'll share back. I think that's all I had for you, Mr. City Manager. Anything else I can do for you?
Any questions, Barbara?
The Aging in Place, the last I had heard, you all have not got the grant.
Yeah, so the Aging in Place program is a program that was funded and initiated through a CDC one-time grant, so it wasn't ever going to be sustained or continued funding. The way that CDC will often approach their funding opportunities is by providing what they call no cost extensions, so not more money, but more time to get the work done. So we did complete that opportunity probably two months ago, and so we do have about another year to do the work, but no additional funding. It was a one-time funding program from the CDC.
But I understood, I thought when the fire chief was here, he had said that he had just sent a letter to have another grant, or the grant could get, is there something we need to do? Because I know that we took money away from that program, and I think it's an extremely important program to stay in place.
Yeah, thank you. So that actually is part of the intended outcomes of the grant-funded activities, was to help create a structure or mechanism to continue some of the work. And so there has been a 501(c)(3) foundation structure stood up that I think you're referring to in receiving about a million dollars of funds. So the idea will be that they'll be able to take the pilot that we've started under the department and continue that work together with Fire and EMS under the foundation.
But now we just took a chunk of money away, so how are we going to replace that?
I don't know, Mr. City Manager.
So I think initially, there was supposed to be more than what you got in the recent plus of a million dollars. So I think initially, it was ideated that it would have been about 1.6, and I think you only ended up with about a million. So I think what the council member, Henley, is asking is what plan do you have in place to try to help secure future funding so the program can continue after it expires at the end of next year?
Thank you.
It could have been something over 3 million for two years, and that dropped down to 1.6 in your, your budget, and then we dropped it down to one, so.
Yeah, thank you.
For you to be able to even continue anything, or if there needs to be some other source.
You know, we are always happy to receive additional support when possible, but we know that that has to be balanced with other priorities. So what I can share is that million probably equates to about another year's worth of work, but you're absolutely right, you know, the foundation will be looking for other ways to continue that support, and that's part of what we intend to help do in partnership with them, is try to help continue to find funding support for that good work. But we're grateful and excited for the opportunity to learn from the pilot, particularly together with Fire and EMS, and find a way to keep it going.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. I, Dr. Padati, reviewing the operating budget, I see there is a significant increase 55% in senior services. Can you kind of elaborate on what that, what that means to our seniors?
Yeah, I apologize, that probably should have been pulled out. So we had a revision there that didn't quite make it to you all today. So that reduction is the $71,000 that, as I mentioned, accounts for a nursing FTE. So it was included in the line item around senior services because in our minds, operationally, we think about those as clinically focused activities, and there is nursing support involved in that senior program. But to be clear, there wasn't money taken away from senior services, there was money associated with a nursing FTE that was vacant, that's been removed to help accommodate those budget goals.
Thank you. And secondly, we do a lot of pilot programs, and thank you for mentioning the Summit 55, a lot of the participants learned about resources available, and in following up, they've asked about the Aging in Place. One specifically emailed me and said, can you ask directly, if the pilot is successful, would you support this in your next budget?
Is that question for me or for you all?
I think, as I communicated to council before, yeah.
This exhibit order takes their.
Knowing Dr. Padati, in next year's budget request, she's likely going to ask for support if she's not able to raise any grant funds for this.
The city manager knows me well.
And we will consider it, and then we'll bring forward a recommendation for council's consideration.
As we know, there's a senior tsunami.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thinking about the days of the pandemic, and we had to share our person with Norfolk, again, we're so grateful that you decided to come to Virginia Beach and serve us, where she's involved in so many different things that we don't see today, and like, she's on the COG Committee, and Dr. Padati, this really such wonderful work, again, I just want to tell you how continually grateful we are for you.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Mayor, I so appreciate it. It is a true privilege to serve here, and I'm also very happy to share that I do that alongside our own Virginia Beach CEO, Mr. Paul Bremen, so we're happy to do it.
Hey, anybody else? Let me just say, there are core services for a city, and there are really core services for the city. And I'll tell you what, you help keep our city safe and, you know, make it the great city we are, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Eileen Smith, our Human Services Director, will come and give the council a presentation on her 2425 proposed budget for, yeah, for fiscal year 2425.
Welcome.
Nice to see everyone again. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney, and I would also like to thank the finance folks for human services that are here, as well as everyone back at the office, Mary Ann Twisdale, Raymond McAvoy, and thank you Cindy for always being here to support us as well. So this is Human Services 2425 budget. As you can see, we have 1,183 city FTEs, that does not include our contract FTEs, that also support our services. We have four major divisions, however, under the four major divisions, which would be social services, BHDS, our central administration, as well as our CQI offices, we have 68 programs and 20 locations, so we're spread throughout the city. The budget is $151 million this year, so we're probably your biggest budget that you're going to hear about. I'm proud of you. Yes, sir. Okay. So on the pie chart that you have here, you see where the BHDS side, which is about 74.4 million, is 49%. Administration is only 7% of our budget, which is about 10 million. And social services, and administration also includes CQI, social services is 44% of our budget at the 66 million. And the revenue, we get revenue from our fees, which is about 27 million. Most of that is under your BHDS side, with our Medicaid, some of our other insurance, some self-pay. We have 44% of our budget at 44 million, which is our state funds. Federal funds come in at 24.8 million, 25%. And we have some miscellaneous funds, as well as transfers in and a little bit of a fund balance. The local match for CSA, Your Children's Services Act, is in that miscellaneous category. All right, so here's the department operating budget. As you can see, even though we did take a reduction of 10.5 positions in the BHDS side, we had some other funds that came in throughout the year, which would be mainly from the state. We also included our VRS contributions for our staff, IT, which would be your personnel stuff. The IT money was distributed to departments this year. We had a slight bit of security increases and went up totally 7.9 million dollars, so that's 6%. And you can see the FTE change is under the BHDS side. Okay, so some accomplishments that we did this year. In the BHDS side, Behavioral Health Developmental Services, we consolidated some of our services. We've been doing that over the years where we're consolidating in buildings, and we added that fifth floor of the Pembroke Six Building. So we have same-day access in that building, as well as several other behavioral health and developmental services programs, which helps for interconnection. We expanded our youth services with our Rapid Response, which was launched in elementary schools. We've been in about 40 elementary schools out of 55 now, and we've served 138 youth in that program. And we also launched our Integrated Pharmacy Services on November 6. Westwood Pharmacy is the pharmacy for that, it's co-located in our Magic Hollow Service Center. We have the medication packaging services there for our intermediate care facilities, group homes, and our ACT team, which is our assertive community tree, or crisis team. 420 clients have been served through this pharmacy. It is really very ideal for the staff, they can just either go upstairs or downstairs if they have a client who is over in that building, and get their pharmacy services, so they have one-stop shop. Other initiatives that are underway, we're consolidating, as you know, our intermediate care facilities with the closure of the Kentucky Avenue Eight Bed ICF. We still have 34 beds in the two other ICFs, which would be at West Neck and at Indian River. We're also exploring a crisis receiving center, and I did a CCSR for you that should have been in your Friday packet to explain that initiative a little bit better. Accomplishments in social services, the Adult Protective Services, staff members completed 17, over 1,700 investigations this past year, Child Protective Services completed over 1,500 investigations, benefits were provided to over 50,000 residents, 109,000 total residents were served in any one of our benefit programs, but this, oh, I'm sorry, the supplemental nutrition was the 50,000, that's the SNAP. 2,000 residents were served in temporary assistance for needy families, TANF, and 2,800 in the childcare program. So we serve about a quarter of the population of our city in one of our programs in the social services side there. Other initiatives that are underway in social services, the one I would highlight here today, because you can read these, is that Adult Protective Services created a multi-disciplinary team this year, and so therefore, they're interconnecting with housing, emergency management, city attorney, fire, police, so that we all come together on some of our senior cases. Any questions?
Any questions? Barbara?
I partially answered it when you said that you defined it as residents, and so these are not duplications, they are individual people, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So we have 109,032 people, residents, citizens of the city who receive Medicaid?
We have 109,000 that are receiving some level of a benefit. It could be SNAP, which is they receive an EBT card, or they're getting TANF, or they're receiving Medicaid benefits, yes.
If you could, at some point, just supply us with the requirement that people meet in order to be served by those programs, I assume it's an income level?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
See that?
Sure, sure, yes, ma'am.
Amelia?
Thank you again for your presentation. Can you talk a little bit more about the Rapid Response that you mentioned in the elementary school?
Certainly. So this is a partnership with the elementary schools, obviously, where we will have clinicians go out to an elementary school and provide an assessment for a student that they may identify as someone who's exhibiting challenging behaviors or needs a little bit of support, they may think that there's a mental health issue that is occurring. The family is highly involved and agrees to it, so it's voluntary, of course, parents are involved. And what we do does not take, you know, half hour, this is more of an in-depth assessment, takes a couple hours to be able to do that, provide back the feedback, and then link that child and family into a service, doesn't have to be our services, could be something in a private provider, but making sure that that child is followed up on when they bring that to our attention, that the person may, or the child may need some additional assistance in that area.
Do you see a more increase at the elementary level in this need for this?
We started in the elementary level, and we used staff that we had to be able to do it because we were hearing from the schools that they wanted to do early intervention at a younger level. However, we do also have two vacant positions right now that we're trying to hire for to do some counseling in the high schools as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Oh, thank you. And, you know, I'll tell you, a good community defines itself in how it takes care of the people that really need a lot of help, and you've helped a lot of people, your department.
Thank you.
Kudos to everyone.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Director Bob Montague will come and give the presentation for public utilities, water and sewer. This would also be the proposed operating budget, as well as their CIP as well.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today to present the Public Utilities Proposed Budget for FY '25. Following my presentation, I'll invite our engineering manager, Mark Babbitt, who will share some details regarding our capital improvement program. So we'll start off, this shows you a slide of our organization. We're composed of four primary divisions. Our budget for FY '25 is $149.5 million. We have 417 FTEs. We have one proposed FTE in that number for our sewer collection bureau. And this recognizes that bureau's long-term use of temporary employees. The funding for the proposed FTE is offset by a corresponding reduction in contracted manpower. This next slide shows our revenues. As a water and sewer enterprise fund, we're fully self-funded. And as you can see here, this chart depicts that the vast majority of our revenues, in fact, 93% of our revenues are generated from monthly charges for water and sewer services to our customers. Here you see our expenditures. They're increasing this year for FY '25 by $8.2 million. $5 million of that $8.2 million is accounted for by cost increases associated with the Norfolk Services Contract. Most of that is significant increases in chemical costs for water treatment and also electrical costs in having the water conveyed to Virginia Beach. Other increases include $1.4 million in personnel costs and $1.3 million in increased operational costs. This shows you the line item format of our budget. The FY '25 proposed budget is $149.5 million. As I mentioned before, this represents a 5.8% increase over this current year. The increase is really associated, we're in, this will be the second year of a five-year rate adjustment program that was approved last year. Significant changes that you'll see here, there's $1.2 million added to the director's office. That's not for me. That's actually a change to the way that we pay for IT services. And a internal service fund has been created for IT, and it's being funded out of the director's office budget. There's a corresponding decrease in transfers. And then there's also that significant increase that you see associated with the Norfolk Services Contract. Next, wanted to share with you a little bit more detail about our operating revenues. As I mentioned before, the increases that we're seeing are really driven, once again, by the scheduled rate increase, the second year of that five-year rate adjustment program. There's also a pretty significant adjustment here of $1.6 million in interest income. And this is really associated with the more favorable interest rate environment that we're finding ourselves in these days. So I wanted to talk about challenges in FY '25 and beyond. In Virginia Beach, the days, the heady days of our growth in terms of the number of water accounts are done. You see that we've had 4% growth since 2011. So we're really working hard in terms of trying to manage our costs, do what we can to operate as efficiently as possible, because we're really at a point where we're dependent on rate increases versus increases in the customer base to deal with rising costs. And speaking of rising costs, again, the water sales and water services contract with the City of Norfolk, which represents 25% of our budget, had a very significant increase in this current year that carries over into next year as well. Aging infrastructure, that's a challenge for everybody in my line of work. We're fortunate to be a relatively young city, but unlike wine, water and sewer pipes do not get better with time. So we spend a lot of our time and effort really looking to make the best use of available funding, really looking at data in terms of how our system is operating, where we're having main breaks, and really trying to target our funding as effectively as we can to ensure that our water and sewer services are both safe and reliable. We're working in a competitive contractor market, and by that, I'm not meaning that we're getting competitive pricing from our contractors, but the work that our contractors do is very specialized, and there's a finite number of them. And lots of work going on, lots of competition in the labor market in this area. You think of the Third Crossing, I'm sure as you're driving around, you're hearing commercials, just like I do, of them advertising to come go work on that Third Crossing. So the contractors are in a similar position that we are in terms of trying to stay staffed up and in a position to do their work. Increased personnel costs, you all were talking about that earlier today, and we've had some much-needed adjustments, making us more competitive, but there's a cost that comes along with that. That's an ongoing challenge for us to ensure that we're financially sustainable in all of these areas, all of these cost increases. Last one, I was going to mention, the EPA's lead and copper rule revision. The big impact that that's having on utilities across the country right now is we're all obligated to do lead service line inventories. So what we're required to do is to go and look at every public service line that goes to a meter in the city, and then the private line on the private side of the meter, and inventory what that material is made out of. We don't think that we have a big lead problem in Virginia Beach. We're fortunate in that regard, but we can't dismiss the regulatory requirement to do this work. So this is an effort that's a five-year program. We're in the second year of that program, and it's costing us about $1.6 million a year to comply with this regulation. And I had mentioned a couple times, last year, council approved a five-year program for rate adjustments. Wanted to share with you what FY '25 looks like there in total, a 6.5% increase for FY '25. Also wanted to share with you a chart showing a point of comparison for other water utilities in the region. Even though we're having to adjust our rates, the other utilities in the region are having to do the same thing, and we remain very, very competitive as a water and sewer service provider in our region. Was also going to mention, we're making adjustments to our rates for water taps and meter fees, and this is really just making adjustments to ensure that we're appropriately recovering costs. These fees that are listed here are associated with what a resident would pay who was impacted by a mandatory connection. So if a water main was running in a part of the city that wasn't covered before, and they were required to connect, these are the fees that they would pay. So you see some modest increases there as well. This next slide shows our CIP means of financing. One of the things that we work with in utilities is a debt management policy where, and we're not obligated to do this, but this is a set of financial policies that was adopted by council a number of years ago. One of those policies states that we will endeavor to pay for our CIP through non-borrowed funds at a rate of 25% on average over a five-year rolling period. And as you see here, if you look at those line items, the pay-go and the use of net assets helps us to reduce our reliance on debt. And over this six-year program, we're funding the program through non-borrowed funds at a 33% clip. So that's actually doing better than that 25% number that we strive to meet. Initiatives underway. Wanted to, I had a question last year about advanced metering infrastructure, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. We recently completed a feasibility study. There's lots of pros that come along with AMI. There's a number of cons, and the big one for us is cost. With some of the increases that we've seen from our services contract with the City of Norfolk and looking at trying to do AMI at this time, it's not really feasible for us. An AMI project in Virginia Beach is about a $60 million project or more. So those were the estimates that we were working, are looking at and received as a part of our study. We're not ruling out AMI. We don't think that it's the time to do it right now. Then, as I mentioned before, we are working hard to be in compliance with the lead and copper rule revision. We're among the leaders in the state in terms of having a plan together. We've got a report that's due in October, and we will be submitting that. A lot of our colleagues around the state are working hard to get their plans together, and ours is really done and largely underway already. Then, you know, I can't emphasize aging infrastructure enough. I think that we've got our second-year rate increases that will take effect in FY '25, and another one in the third year, followed by modest increases in years four and five of that rate adjustment. And I would anticipate that we may be coming back to this body at that point in time, given what we're seeing in terms of the bids that we're getting for our capital improvement plan. And we have some significant aging infrastructure that's going to have to be addressed at some point. A good case in point is one of our two service, our transmission lines running down Virginia Beach Boulevard is celebrating its 100th birthday this year. And some of our counterparts, like we don't take off the price tag off the pipe until it reaches 100 years, and that's not something that we celebrate in Virginia Beach. We're trying to get ahead of those. So I'll take any questions?
You got a question, and then Worth.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Montague, thank you for the presentation today.
Yes, sir.
As you noted, we are discussing collective bargaining. We've heard from fire, but we don't often get to talk to the directors of Public Utilities, Public Works. So I do have a few questions. I was looking at your operating budget, and I identified the top four largest line items. We'll exclude business and community and customer service, but from an engineering administration, $9.2 million. Sewer pump stations, $9.1 million, and then sewer collections, $6.6 million, roughly almost 300, 200 employees there. Where do you, as the leader of the department, from your perspective, where do we rank as it relates to other cities and what you're seeing in terms of how we're paying these men and women that are out there taking care of these?
Well, I don't have that information at my disposal right now. It's, I can tell you that years ago, Virginia Beach always endeavored to be number one in the region. And I don't know for a fact, but I hear anecdotally that we're not. I haven't looked at any comparative data with respect to salaries in the region lately, but, you know, I think we got behind with the Great Recession. It took us a while to sort of recover and get a focus on making some adjustments to our pay. It was much, much needed, you know, the pandemic hit as well. We were struggling to keep up with paying our new employees coming in what they could make going to work at McDonald's. To council's credit, I think that you all have taken some very, very responsible action to make us more competitive in recent years. And I know we've tried most recently with this step plan. We've also recently made some adjustments to the utility mechanic series, which is helping us to be more competitive as well. But with respect to collective bargaining, I have, one of the employees on the city committee is from my shop. We have some who are for, some who aren't as passionate, leave for. As director, I'm just interested in being competitive and ensuring that we can fill our vacancies so that we can perform our critical services.
Okay, number two, you lead right into my question. So within those three, engineering, sewer, and sewer pump stations, and for the public that doesn't know those, some of those jobs can be very dangerous in terms of what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. Where do you see the highest, the biggest challenge with retention in terms of those three areas?
Water distribution has actually been one area where we have struggled. And then sewer collection has been working really hard to try to fill its vacancies. It seems like they take a couple steps forward and then a couple steps back. But again, one of the things that we've done more recently as well is adopt a stipend for CDL drivers, which has also been helpful in terms of trying to address the retention issue.
And lastly, several of my colleagues brought up that it's not all about wages, and I get it, we have benefits, but what I've heard from some of your men and women that are out in the community is the morale and the fairness piece. And when you look at some of the aging populations, some that are retiring, filling it with younger generation, maybe not having much experience, within your key departments, where do you see the greatest strain where you have individuals retiring, and then we're trying to maybe replace them with younger, maybe staffers or talent? And some of these individuals have expressed that they don't necessarily, they may or may not see an opportunity to, you know, they may be there 15 years and they can't move up. So is there a strain that you're seeing within engineering, sewer, water, where you could identify that now, or is it just, I don't know if that's a?
Well, I think there's natural constraints in every single one of my divisions and bureaus. There's only but so many supervisory positions, and we don't want to artificially inflate those layers for the sake of creating more opportunity. But I feel very good that as a department, we have a lot of focus on training, on safety training, on job skill training. We recently purchased a simulator for an excavator training. We spend a lot of time training our new employees in terms of getting them ready to take their CDL. So I think that there's a lot of value that we offer a young person coming into the city. Sometimes our, the young folks don't always recognize the benefits that are offered, and we have some people who will go to the private sector. We also see that the grass is not always greener, and people coming back to work for us as well. So I think that we've made a lot of strides over, you know, certainly the past couple of years in trying to get ourselves in a more competitive position, but we probably have some room to go as well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Montague, for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on the Norfolk, on the 25% increase on the Norfolk Water Sales Agreement, is that reasonable, justified?
Well...
Making up for past losses or?
No, these are based on their projected costs, and the Water Services Agreement looks at their cost of providing services to us. So they project what those costs are, they set a rate, and then we have to fund it. At the end of, each of these service periods are two years, and at the end of a two-year service period under this agreement... service period under this agreement, we do a true-up. So in that instance, we look at what the actual costs are. So sometimes we may owe Norfolk some money, other times they may owe us a credit. So we think, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, we're a secondary system where we don't treat our own water. But my colleagues within the region and across the state are experiencing significant increases.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Montague. Thank you for the presentation, and also thank you for how responsive you've been. Whatever, you know, we've had an issue in District 9. Incredibly helpful, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This question, I know we're behind, so it'll take probably a little bit longer to answer, so I'll maybe chat with you offline. In terms of the aging infrastructure and the replacements, particularly in neighborhoods, and I'm thinking of neighborhoods, older neighborhoods that have 56-year-old water and sewer pipes along the Bayfront, and northwest side of our city is where I represent. So when people ask me about, when is that going to turn over? There's really no timeline that I've been able to communicate. I was just kind of wondering, and I know neighborhood infrastructure replacement involves also lines that go from the, right away to the house, so there's a homeowner responsibility component to it as well. But is there like a schedule or a plan or somewhere where we can say, okay, this is when this is going to happen here, or this is what it's going to take, just to give people some sort of reasonable expectations?
Well, there's always an evolving plan, and it's dynamic as well. You know, one of the things we experienced a couple of years ago were our bids coming back at 40% above the engineer's estimate. So then we have to make some adjustments to that plan, because we set our rates based on a schedule. I shared with you what our capital program looks like. My rates are based on those expenditure levels. So sometimes, I've been here 30 years, sometimes it's a good time to get work out on the streets, other times you're not getting as much work done, depending on the economic cycle. So yes, there is a plan, and we'd be happy to host you. We have a great planning and analysis group that works to facilitate the development of our capital program. We get good input from our operations folks as well, who know the city really well in terms of areas that are more problematic. And then we use data to look at things like break rates and figure out where we're having the biggest issues, and then prioritize where we're spending our money.
I'll take you up on that. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Anybody else? Hey, you know, Bob, thanks for doing that. And, you know, with the aging infrastructure and a whole bunch of other challenges, your folks are doing a remarkable job.
Well, I appreciate it, and I wanted to introduce Mark Babbitt, who is our engineering manager, and he's going to share a little bit of information about our CIP.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very excited to be here. Between your questions and Bob's presentation, mine's going to be a complete repeat, so I apologize. But it shows that we're all thinking the same. So hello again, I'm really happy to be here. My name's Mark Babbitt. I'm the engineering manager for Public Utilities, and we are here to discuss our CIP. One of the things I like to say is, I know it's a tough position a lot of people are in. Bob spends all his time figuring out how to bring our money in, our rates, dealing with that. I figure out how to spend it and make sure we spend it in a wise and are good stewards to our ratepayers. One of the things I always say to my staff, are the people sitting in our seats 100 years from now going to think we made the right decisions? And that's what maintaining a utility is all about. So with that, I have our six-year CIP. You can see here that we have a 32% of water and 68% of our sewer. For those not familiar, sanitary environments are more extreme than water, and they typically require more funding. However, our water system is aging fast. As you heard Bob say, we officially have our first 100-year-old pipe. And that pipe is in good condition because the soil conditions around it are probably pretty good. So it is not corroding from the outside, so we have some time on that. But this is what happens throughout the city, and we are getting to the point where you're going to see that 32% of water start approaching the sanitary as the city gets Here again, just emphasizing how much of our budget is spent on CIP aging. Right now, we try to maintain an industry-accepted system site, a life cycle of 75 to 100 years. We are, where most of our pipes are much younger. We're at a 30 to 60 year. So we got some time, but we are going to see the infrastructure increase. Okay, so let's talk about though how we are spending some money, because you guys have heard a lot about income and where it comes from, but I want to show you some of the great things we're doing around the city right now. So our first one, not in the city, sorry. This has to do with Lake Gaston. It has to do with the 76-mile water main, raw water main the city built. This is an aerial crossing out at Nottaway. It's a $1.5 million investment. This pipeline went into place in early '97. After 27 years of exposure to the elements, the crossing needed to be repainted to protect the pipeline from exterior degradation. This will be the second crossing VB has had, Virginia Beach has had to repaint this year, and this will happen for all five of our crossings every 25 years or so to ensure that pipe is maintained. All right, you brought up neighborhood. Neighborhood projects are some of our biggest ones. They evolve, they change all the time. It has to do with pipe condition and age. Some neighborhoods could be approaching that 7,500-year-old, and there's nothing wrong. Other communities could be only 40 years old, and our guys are in there 10, 20 times a month fixing breaks or unclogging sewers, and those are what take priority. This is a project that was started before I was with the city of Virginia Beach. It is in the Penbrook Meadows area. This is a 54-year-old community, was seeing increased waterline breaks as well as sewer repairs. Therefore, Virginia Beach Public Utilities developed a community rehabilitation plan to replace the water and sewer system throughout the community. You can see that Phase 1 has been completed. Phase 2 is under construction right now, and Phase 3 is under design and will go to construction fiscal year '27. Another sign of a growing community and an aging system, the Great Neck Tank. I'm sure everyone here knows the Great Neck Tank. Well, this tank has been locked out of the hydraulic system for a number of years now. And we did an engineering studies and analysis, including hydraulic modeling, which was determined the tank must be replaced at approximately 15 feet higher. Now, could have we built a pump station? We probably could have to keep that pressure up, but then we have to maintain it and spend electric on it for the rest of its life. So going with a gravity resolution solved this problem. This tank is under, being stripped right now of its paint. It'll be torn down by the summer, and the new tank will be going up and should be in service by January 2026. And speaking of tanks, everyone probably knows the Courthouse tank right across the street. This one has also been hydraulically locked out and hasn't been in service in many years. So we've put this in our CIP, and it came up, and I'll be happy to say that that is actually a picture of them removing the paint lines where they're going to cut, and this tank will start to be cut down next week. And lastly, I'm going to go back, I'm trying to give them some time back, so I apologize if I'm going too fast. But again, this is our water CIP, and I just want to emphasize that the aging infrastructure portion, the percentages will never change. It'll always be a high percentage. It's how much we have to replace. Typically, you would want to replace 1% of your waterline every year so you can have a 100-year cycle, but cities aren't built in linear construction. So you have to pick and choose, and that's why we get with our operations team and see where the biggest maintenance headaches are coming in and replace those lines. Therefore, our CIP for both water and sewer will become more challenging and costly to ensure the systems maintain a desired level of service for generations to come, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
The heater is running. Thank you, Carson. Hydrologically locked out? What's that mean?
So, and it takes a certain amount of pressure to push the water throughout the whole system, and the pressure that is adjacent to the tank, let's say for those, every 2.3 feet is one PSI. Let's say there's 60 PSI up in the North Shore. That would be just over 120 feet high. That tank's only 115 feet, so it's not high enough to help out.
That's important to firefighters.
Yes, very important to firefighters.
Anything else? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're going to skip Director Lee from Emergency Communication and Citizen Services. She just had an unfortunate situation at her workplace that she needs to get back to. But at this time, Public Works Director, Director Hudson's going to come and give the operating budget for the Public Works Department, and then will be followed up by two CIPs, one from Stormwater and one from the Flood Protection Program.
Good afternoon again. It's my pleasure to introduce the proposed fiscal year '25 budget for the Department of Public Works. And not to be contrary to Director Eileen, but our budget is significantly larger than hers. So at 260 million, almost $260 million with 21 divisions, we do have a little bit larger budget. One of the things I hope that you'll pay attention to as I go through my slides, and I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but I have tried very hard to show the men and women of the Department of Public Works in my slides. And I think it's important that we remember all the different folks that do what we ask them to do. So in the proposed budget, we do have a total of 1,012, a little over 1,012, including some part-time employees. If you recall during your retreat, Kevin presented a slide, he called it the myth of the billion-dollar budget. I think I need to kind of borrow from him a little bit and call this the myth of the $258 million budget, because as you look at the Department of Public Works, our budget is made up of many different funding sources, a lot of different grants, a lot of different special revenues that are dedicated for specific purposes. And then, of course, we do have the largest component of this of the general fund at $111 million. But of that $111 million, please note that $58.9 million is VDOT urban maintenance funding, so that is not all local contribution. Briefly touching on the operating budget by line item, you'll notice that the general fund at the top does have an increase to the number of employees. This is as a result of increases to the urban maintenance fund in fiscal year '25. So we realized a $9 million growth in the urban maintenance fund that allowed us to add some employees to our operating staff. One of the things that we really tried to prioritize in this budget was noting the condition of pavement markings throughout the city, and so we do have quite a bit of, quite a bit of that, of those new employees are dedicated to that purpose. In the Sandbridge line, we also have one new maintenance supervisor. That's to help take care of issues as they relate to the Sandbridge community. Currently, the maintenance supervisor is at the resort area. When there's an issue, there's a delay in the supervisor being able to get back and forth. And then you'll notice on the waste management line, there's also an increase. That's as a result of recycling, which we'll talk about here in just a moment. And then on the city garage, I also wanted to point that out. There's a bit of growth in the city garage. That's directly attributable to the costs of parts and just the overall need for additional maintenance as a result of the inability to purchase vehicles through and following the pandemic. Major changes and initiatives, I have a couple of slides here, just touching on some of the things that we're doing in the Department of Public Works as we move forward. The waste management fee, as we talked about, was increased last year by $2.50 per house per month. This year, we are proposing a $3.05 increase per house per month. The increase last year was to cover our, what we needed to make sure that we could take care of increased staff and salaries. That number would be adequate. The $3.05 is solely to cover the cost of the recycling increase, and that has been briefed to council prior. Staff have worked with finance. Also, I want to point this out, staff have been working with finance to restructure our cost centers to allow us the ability to track our finances more effectively. And the reason that's important is, prior to now, I have been unable to tell you, well, even now, I'm unable to tell you how much it costs to pick up your black can, because the way our cost centers were structured, it was all just lumped in. I knew what our overall budget was, but we had so many different things that are going on in that overall budget. One of the things that we're really trying to do across Public Works is to work with finance and be able to get us so that I can start to develop what the different costs are for the different lines of service that we provide, start thinking about like bulk service, how much it costs to run the landfill, and all of those different things. And the reason I point that out is that at some point, there may be a desire by council to perhaps charge fees for certain elements of the services that we provide that are over and above. That would help the ratepayers not have to suffer the burdens necessarily if we want to offer additional services, or if we want to offer extended hours of landfill, those types of things. So I just wanted to point that out. That is something that we're working with finance on. We hope to have some really interesting information come out of that, but unfortunately, it's going to take a year or so. Special event planning, I just wanted to point out that we are fortunate in the city of Virginia Beach that tourism and hospitality are returning to pre-pandemic numbers. However, that does have an impact to staff, and I mentioned paint and signs across the city. That was one of the areas that we have really seen quite a bit of difficulty in maintaining as a result of just trying to stay on top of all of the different responsibilities that those folks are doing. So we really feel like we have an opportunity to make a difference in this upcoming budget. This is the historical timeline for the Stormwater ERU. And now the Stormwater ERU is frozen, and it remains frozen, but it is important to note that that wasn't always the case, and we have pointed out to city council in the past that that freeze is putting us, put us under some type of challenge. At this point, we are participating with the Department of Public Utilities to do, with them. They, and we have jointly hired a rate analyst. The rate analyst is going to do the work on the public utility side of the house. They're also going to help us on the Stormwater side of the house to help us understand what that rate really could be, should be, or what the impacts are as a result of the rate freeze that we have in place. But we still have a couple of years until we're proposed to come out of that freeze.
I just want to add something to that, Mayor, and members of council. We've communicated this to council before. I think when council made that commitment, that was before we saw 30, 40% increases in our CIP. We do anticipate that when that rate study is complete, we're going to have to have a conversation with council about where to go on that. Remember, that is likely going to be the source to help cover some of the operational expenses associated with a lot of the flood protection infrastructure that we're bringing on board, that those do have operating expenses that will require plus up on staff and equipment, and this may likely possibly be the source for that. We don't need a decision now, but just trying to let you, council, know that we're probably going to have to have a conversation about how do we address the freeze going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Additional initiatives underway. Those logos on the left-hand side, those are all technology improvements that the Department of Public Works is currently working through. It's important that what we're doing is staying on top of technology in terms of, from an IT standpoint. For instance, Asset Works, the top one, Fleet Focus, that's allowing us the opportunity to keep track of our vehicles in a way that we've never kept track of them. It's not just a matter of knowing that we have them or where they're located, but it's also helpful to understand how many miles are going on and when they're approaching their best, most optimum time for disposal. And when I say disposal, that's not throwing them away. That'd be to resell them so that we can recoup costs and help us to buy additional vehicles. Cartograph, sales force, other facility forces that relates to our assets, Masterworks. Masterworks is key to helping us implement the capital improvement projects, helping us to stay on time and on budget. These are all important technological components. And I feel it's important to note that while the Department of Public Works has entered into a more memorandum of agreement with IT, and we have a good relationship with IT, the folks that are implementing this on our side of the house, that's the engineers, that's the field guys. These are not IT people in a lot of cases that are having to work through this. And that, again, those efforts, they take time. they take time, they take, take away from the work that staff would otherwise be doing on any other given time. But it's important work, and we're, and we're committed to it. Additional items that are there for us to be aware of is the increased demand on staff and divisions, and of course, flat budgets. Everything's coming at a, at a premium. The parts go up, the price for contract labor goes up, our facilities are getting older, our fleet is getting older. All of those things mean that we're having increased demands, and of course, as councils is all too aware, we are trying to maintain flat budgets where we can. So, that is putting an increased strain on staff. And then, also, I wanted to mention, one of the other things that I think my staff is doing very well is really reaching out in terms of outreach and education, both through City Council-sponsored events and also what media's doing. Really, a lot of energy, and a lot of my staff are showing up on Facebook and on the other social media platforms. I'm just incredibly proud. And with that, I'll turn it over. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Rosemary.
Just real quick, I should remember this, but I just have forgotten. When we did the survey for the recycling, what was the percentage that said they wanted to do, even though we know all the problems with it?
It was, it was, the results that media returned had many different classifications, and I apologize, Vice Mayor, I cannot recall the number. I, I think I know.
That feels so bad.
Yeah, no, it was, it was in favor of, but I don't recall it. I recall it being in the 60 to 70% range. Mr. Manager, do you have a better memory than I do?
I think, I think it was something like that. I think it was like 60 to 70% that overwhelmingly support recycling and paying a fee for recycling. We'll get more information and get to that.
I still wish we could have done an opt-in program, but.
As do I.
Amelia.
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to applaud you for the amount of women leadership you've put into this. That is important.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? You do some very important work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll be joined by Melanie Coffey, and also, I'm going to mess up your name.
Jonas Allred.
Jonas Allred, okay. They're going to give the City Stormwater CIP, they're going to give an update on the proposed CIP for the next, for 24, 25, but also for the next six years. Yeah, great article, yes, definitely.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council. I'm Melanie Coffey. For y'all that don't know me, I am the MS4 Permit Administrator in Public Works, and I'm here with Jonas Allred to present the Stormwater Management Program. The program has a total six-year cost of $569 million with 29% going for the water quality regulatory aspects, and then 71% towards the operations and maintenance program. This is a combination of 33 ongoing programs and projects. So, I'm going to specifically review the Water Quality Regulatory Program, and that has 16 projects and programs. And basically, all of those are supporting the city's compliance with the MS4 Permit. So, the permit is issued by the Department of Environmental Quality, and it's requiring that the city conduct a lot of stormwater pollution prevention activities, and also requirements for the city to reduce specific pollutants from our stormwater discharges, which is often called TMDL, basically to improve our waterways and our bays. So, the requirements are really looking at what's affecting state water quality standards, and those are set by DEQ, who are the ones that issue that permit to us. So, we get, we have a lot of great information on our website about everything. I won't go into much detail because I'm trying to keep this short. So, first, I just want to go through and review the current projects and programs, and then I'm going to talk about the few new ones that we have in the program. So, we have six projects that are programmed, and all of these support the city's progress towards the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. We found that modifications to existing wet ponds have been a very cost-effective practice for us to do to get those pollutant reductions, nutrient reductions. So, of these projects, four of those, the Bayville Lake, the Chatham Hall Lake, Kemp's Lake, and Lake Edward are all examples of this type of project where we're going into an existing pond and making improvements to help remove pollutants from that water before it's discharged to the waterway. And these are, are also, actually three of these, I want to mention too, we've received grant funding from DEQ for those as well, the first three that I mentioned. The, the other one that's really significant for us is the Lynn Haven Bay Ecosystem Resorption Project, and that is a cost participation with the Army Corps of Engineers. And that is our largest project. It's a big effort. It's multi-phase project, and we are implementing it in phases where we're putting in oyster reefs, we're putting in wetlands, and we're also planting submerged aquatic vegetation, all to help with the biodiversity in the river. And I have a little slide on it later to talk about that. For the programmatic side, we have five ongoing programs that are watershed-focused programs, so that covers the whole city where we go in and identify and then design and construct projects from those watershed programs. And we try to allocate a portion of the funding to each watershed relative to the, the size and the amount of impervious area in those watersheds, and also based on what our TMDL goals are for that watershed. The MS4 Permit Compliance also has some requirements where we have two citywide programs that support that, the Water Quality Enhancement one, which is more TMDL-focused, and then the Stormwater Regulatory, Surface Water Regulatory, which is more programmatic and focusing on more city facility improvements and things that we need to do for the permit compliance to make sure that we're not polluting our waterways with our activities that we do around the city. The last one I wanted to mention is a cost participation program, and that was something that was initiated to do the Virginia Beach Conservation Assistance Program, where we provide funding to the Virginia Dare Sewal and Water Conservation District, and they implement for us. But basically, to construct smaller BNP's at either residential properties or commercial, or anybody that's interested that can apply to the program. So, if anybody knows of anybody, put a plug in for them to go to their website and apply. The other thing, we have three new projects this year. So, we initiated these in their ongoing watershed program, and then now we're coming to create the standalones due to the size of the project. So, two of them are in the Southern Rivers watershed, and one of them is in the Lynn Haven River watershed, and I'm going to briefly discuss just each one of them. So firstly, we're going to be installing some manufactured treatment devices at the Bellamy Woods Park, and this is going to provide treatment for the stormwater from that neighborhood. There's a stormwater pipe that goes down Glen Lock and Drive. We're going to be intercepting that water to provide that treatment before it goes into the Salem Canal and then the North Landing River. So, this project is estimated at about $2.5 million, and it supports compliance with our TMDL for the North Landing River watershed. We have a 770-pound requirement for that watershed, and this one's going to give us 13 pounds of phosphorus reductions. The next one is Brigadoon Park. We're going to be expanding the waterway along the side of the park, and that's going to provide additional storage in that center area where the large blue area is. We're going to be, so we'll be digging all of that out so that that can provide extra storage of stormwater, and it'll provide water quality treatment for that water and also some flood protection as well because of the amount of removal that we're going to have to do to make that, that area work. So, this project is a little bit more, it's estimated at 49 pounds of phosphorus reduction, so we're excited about this one. This is a big project. It's also estimated at $5.3 million for the total project cost. Since we are using that middle, that upper-middle part of the park with this pond area, we're also going to be adding some additional walking trail around it, just so that people can have a little better, you know, use of the park area and can see the water area. And we're also adding a little fitness station as well. That's something that we've been coordinating with Parks and Recreation on this, and they're trying to add more amenities, you know, at the, the local parks for, for residents. Okay, and the next one, the third one that we're doing is a new constructed wetland, and this is on city-owned property. I believe it was purchased as part of that whole BRAC thing that we did a long time ago. There's quite a few parcels up here in Oceana Gardens that were purchased, so it's not being used right now. We're going to be putting in, clearing out some of the trees and putting in a nice constructed wetland in that area. So, it's going to add a lot of aesthetic improvements to that area as well. It was awarded grant funding from DEQ, so it's estimated at $2.4 million for the project cost, and it's going to reduce, again, the pollutants that are going into Lynn Haven River and then the Chesapeake Bay. And next, I wanted to cover just a few of our accomplishments. Some of them include the success of our Phase 1 oyster reef site with that Lynn Haven Ecosystem Project. So, this one, I've included a few photos here. They recently did remove some of the reef balls because part of the monitoring program, they pull them out of the water so they can count the, the number of oysters, and they measure the size of the oysters and everything to, to measure success. And it basically has succeeded all the expectations for the growth of the site, so we're really excited about it. Oysters help clean the waterway, so having this work so well is, is a good news story for us. We've also completed construction of two projects this year, one of them adding new stormwater treatment at the Laurel Cove Park in Great Neck, and also a new wet swale at SeaTac Park. We've also started some construction on several projects. So, we have, I have the four listed here, but the one I wanted to really mention was the historic Kempsville one. That one's a unique project. It's going to, we've been partnering with Parks and Recreation on this one, so it's going to have a new constructed wetland. It's right in front of the shopping center off Prince Town Road where the old Long Done Silvers was, by the Elizabeth River. And we're going to be partnering with them. They're going to be putting in a new kayak launch for the Elizabeth River there. So, it'll have a new launch, little parking lot, and it'll have the constructed wetland with some educational signing. It's going to be really nice. So, that one is starting construction now. And the other, let's see, the other, lastly, the, the big one for, for me really, we had a lot of coordination this last year with the Department of Environmental Quality negotiating our new MS4 permit. And we, we did really well, got it issued the end of January, and really, it's not a, not a huge amount of change or impact for the city, so that was really a good news story for us. So, next, I would like to turn it over to Jonas Allred for him to talk about the maintenance program.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Jonas Allred, and I oversee the stormwater operations groups, both the in-house and the little group that manage CIP projects. As you can see, we have 16 total programs, 16 total programs and projects. Two are standalone maintenance projects, and 14 are ongoing programs. Start off with two standalone projects that we have going on. There's no change to these projects. It's 42nd Street Pump Station Outfall Repairs and as well as Inspection. The second one is a Lakeview Drive Channel Improvement. We're extending some pipes to prevent some further erosion. There is a public meeting coming up on this here at the end of the month. We as well have a long list of ongoing programs. There's no significant change to these programs. Part of that is that this funding comes from the ERU. It is noteworthy to see that the ARPA funding has recently been transferred and it's updated on these slides. We are going through an asset management effort to try to better prioritize our inventory. That's just focusing on the current existing inventory of pipes, BNP's, and ditches and canals, and we hope that we lay a good foundation for the future flood protection program assets that are coming our way. The only program with a change is our cave-in program. We've, you see it, we have requested and been funded with $1.5 million for the next fiscal year, FY '25. This is a critical program for us because it augments our in-house efforts. Our backlog has increased slightly to just below two years. Our goal is a six-month backlog. We currently have 115 locations to repair. We are coordinating this program with our neighborhood rehab programs to make sure we don't go into the same area twice. We had requested additional funding for the canal management phase. It was not approved at this point, and the canal, the cave-in program, as we can see, received $1.5 million instead of the $2 million requested. So, some of the recent accomplishments that we have, have done under the ARPA program and specifically the Neighborhood Rehab Program, we have cleaned and inspected 325,000 linear Fido pipe. That's almost 61 miles. And we have completed four packages, so we have had nine totals, and we're going to have, we have another five or so with additional funding. We have, under the Southern Canals and Lead Dish Program, this year, we have also completed Beggar's Bridge Site 11. And our BNP Maintenance Program, this year, we have performed maintenance of 53 BNP's. Program total is around 340 BNP's, and we're just now coming back to re, mo, mo, mo assets that we have done in the past. So, we're coming around and keeping that hard work at bay. For the cave-in program in total, we have 376 completed total through two year-to-date. And as for the lake management ARPA, we're finally hitting the ground. We are working on five lakes, Great Neck Lake Number Two, Reedtown Lake, John Bidai, Lavis Pond. We have open bids for two packages. We're going to advertise the remaining two packages in May. On the regular lake management program, we just recently completed Chimney Hill Number One. So, some of our major challenges is just overall construction increases. Even if we lean on annual services contracts, we see that increase trickle down to us. Looking down the road, you know, future funding is increasing, so the system is getting older. So, there's a need there for an increased maintenance funding, especially with the flood protection program coming. Our goal is, you know, maintenance cycles, backlogs. Our neighborhoods are getting older, infrastructure is aging, and we're seeing that reflected in the cave-in repairs we perform. We also would like to expand canal and roadside ditch maintenance. Canals are the ones that connect off-road ditches to waterways, so they are a critical component in the whole flow of runoff and water. And to close out, increasing stormwater pump station maintenance is coming with the flood protection program. So, it's worth keeping an eye on. And with that, do we have any questions?
Two comments on the, the two portions. Of course, the first part of the presentation that Melanie gave, you know, we often, we just forget about the water quality part and how important that is to the whole management of our stormwater. We usually think of it as being the quantity part, but the quality part's extremely important too. And of course, we have our permits that we have to meet those standards, but I think the fact that we do so much to make sure that the stormwater is properly treated and we've got good quality in the receiving waters is really important. And we lose, we lose track of the fact that that's a part of it too. It's not just taking the quality. We've got to stay with the, or the, the quantity. We have to stay with the quality too. So, thank you for, for that. On the second part with the water quality part, are you comfortable that we met the commitment we made in that resolution at our bond referendum that we would increase our, our maintenance as well as providing for these stormwater projects that you, that we have, we have met that commitment with what you have been doing? I know the ARPA funds really allowed us to do a lot more.
Yes, ma'am. So, if you recall, when we had that conversation and we talked about the bond referendum and how that would allow us to increase the amount of maintenance, we were using the, the ERU to fund all of our capital at that point. And because we passed the bond referendum, that allowed us to do so much more on the bond referendum side and in terms of the FPP side. But it also meant that the funding that we were using, that we're getting through the ERU, wasn't having to go to debt service. And so that funding is rolling, is rolling into this to some degree, not entirely, not entirely yet, because there was still some outstanding debt service, and I'm sure Kevin Chatalir could elaborate on that. But it does help to some degree, and then the ARPA money has definitely made a difference. I do think it's important, though, as the manager pointed out, that freezing the ERU against the impacts of inflation and the other impacts that have happened to us, salary increases, those types of things, are diminishing that as we move forward. I hope that answers your question.
Well, we certainly are grateful for the ARPA money and that we were able to do so much with that, because I guess without that, we really would have had an awful, terrible time trying to make sure we were not having to not keep that commitment. But with the, so we're really looking at next year having to consider what we're going to do with the ERU, or do you?
Councilwoman Henry, I think it's probably next year's budget, right? So I think the rate study should be in kind of around November, right? Kind of five-year forecast. At the same time, we also want to have the conversation with council about the CIP big picture standpoint, and also let's have that, we want to have the conversation about the sustainable funding force for the gap between the 567 original bond referendum and the billion or so that we need to get to, right? So that'll give us all that information that we need, so council can have like a real deliberate, cautious and detailed conversation so we can get some guidance from you all as we pivot towards producing the '25 and '26 budget, right? So yeah, no decision either right now, but it's likely probably fall, winter is when council's going to have to really kind of roll their sleeves up and have those detailed conversations about what do we do in terms of addressing our flood protection program, our stormwater backlog and things like that.
Okay, Josh and then Amelia.
Thank you, everybody, for your presentation. And just to follow on to Councilwoman Henry's comments, it's a, it's a really big deal for combating neighborhood flooding when we're talking about the canal dredging and ditch clearing. And I remember it might have been a couple months ago, LJ, where you gave us some top-line figures, linear feet dredged and, or how many miles. Importantly, I mean, I think where, where those activities were located, too, would be, would be kind of good for the public to see so that they can see the return on the money that we're investing, just by virtue of the stormwater fee, FPT aside. But is there somewhere on our website, or is there some way you're keeping track of that information so that we can help carry that message?
We don't have it displayed on our website as to what, what ditches are getting, I think that, I think that might be a little bit prohibitive for us to get that micro, to get that granular, to put that information on the website. We will certainly do it should council direct us to do so. It would be my preference not to, not because I wish to make it hard, just the resources that it would take to do that. I will say that it's important to note that Virginia Beach is a diverse community. We have areas of the city that are heavily developed, and we have areas of the city that are still largely rural. And so when you, when you talk about dredging, it really kind of differs in different parts of the city. I, I know that in District One, for instance, we have the large canal that runs along Providence. We do what we can to keep it open, but in order to do something much bigger, that's a very large capital improvement project. District Two, we have some of the canals that we can maintain rather easily, and then, I'm just using those as two different examples, but, but certainly understanding that it's different in different parts of the city, and, and I don't know that I could really give you a good way to say that it's our desire to treat all the districts equitably, but not equally, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that is actually not the reason why I asked. It was really just so that, because I think it's a good story to tell. And I, you know, people, I mean, these, these generational investments that we're making and infrastructure improvements on the flood protection program side of the house, those are, those are separate and apart from the maintenance and the efforts that you all are undertaking that really actually even more so and immediately impact neighborhood flooding by keeping these ditches clear and allowing the water to flow and, and keeping the water away from homes.
How many miles did you say the, the pipe cleaning was?
Today with the ARPA?
Yeah.
So yeah, that's the one miles we have.
That's a lot of miles, the pipe. And so I, I mean, I think, I hope that between the updates that we give to the Flood Protection Board, the frequent quarterly updates that we're giving through our consultant with Jacobs here, that our, that the community understands, folks are, we're doing it. We're cleaning and we're clearing and we're doing things that, that I don't think the city of Virginia Beach has, has seen that level of energy that we're, that we're doing. I mean, honestly, I think a lot is getting done. I'm incredibly proud of our staff and the, and the work that we're getting done.
Okay, Amelia and then Barbara.
Thank you so much for this presentation, and yes, you should be incredibly proud of the group. I have three areas, the Lake Edwards that you mentioned for 100,000, and then you skipped a year. Explain a little on that.
Certainly.
It's in your first portion.
Yes, Councilwoman Wood, thank you. I would like to point that out. Basically, it's covered in that challenges slide at the end, the cost increases that we've been seeing. So we generally want to try to, to fund everything within the program amount that we have. So in order to keep the projects going that we're already trying to go to construction with, those costs have gone, they've escalated astronomically beyond what we thought. So we had to delay the funding for Lake Edwards since we were not started yet. We're basically in a planning phase, so we wouldn't be upsetting that one for, you know, like a delay of construction, whereas the other ones, they wouldn't have been able to go to construction without that funding. Yes, ma'am. But it's still an important project for us.
And the second I wanted to, I'm really pleased, I used to be Kempsville Councilwoman, so it is so good to see about the kayak lunch and that in this river, because they can become a tourist attraction with the historic revolutions, all of that that happened along there. So that's going to be a plus for that now District One. And then the other one, with the ARPA funding that you mentioned about Fayette, accomplishment there. Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you, Barbara.
An entirely different kind of thing, but it's still flooding. We had a lot of flooding down in the southern part of the city over last week, and of course, that wasn't stormwater. That was wind-tide water. And, you know, folks have a tendency to think of it all as the same thing, but when our roads are flooded and some even have to be closed, and they say, well, why haven't you done anything about this flooding? How in the world do we ever address that situation? I mean, when, when we have the extensive hard winds, and, and, you know, I've been telling you all the time it was coming, thank goodness it's going to the north. I liked the warm weather, but we have to not have all the wind from the south. We've got to have some from the north every now and then to blow the wind back out, I mean, the water back out. Is there, I mean, how in the world do we address this so that we, if there is anything that can be done? I know we're hoping that our marsh restoration project will help slow the water down, but this, this whole thing with the tides is, because you can't treat these water systems equally, because that whole southern part of the city is an entirely different animal. And I don't know how we go about it, but...
Yes, ma'am. That's the third leg, right? So flood protect, so stormwater management in the city of Virginia Beach has three legs. One is the operations and maintenance, which is, which is what Jonas is doing. Two is the flood protection program, which we're getting regular updates on. And the third is that coastal storm management, CRSM. That's the, that's the project that, that y'all don't hear a lot about, but it's the project that we're working on with the Corps of Engineers, that, that we're, that we're working on with them, where they're analyzing it and trying to, to figure out what we do to help counteract the effects of sea level rise and those coastal storms that are coming in off the coast. That's going to be a big factor in what we're talking about for the southern waterways.
And that one, council, I think you're probably going to get another update from that towards the end of the year as well, and maybe with the Army Corps folks as well. That one is where council, if we decide to move forward with it, we're going to have to figure out what our local match is. And if you recall, Norfolk got something, a lack, like something like $2 billion, if not more, in federal funding, but it also necessitated a $400 or $500 million local match as well, right? So that's also the other thing that's going to likely be coming down our pike as well, you know? And when you talk about flood protection and stormwater and coastal resilience, you're talking about existential threats to Virginia Beach. So those ones are going to really be ones that are going to be high on the mind of staff and also high on the mind of council to address as we think forward on how we take care of our CIP and our budgets.
Well, of course, they, you know, with the roads, when you look at the way they flood, I mean, we think in terms of raising the roads, and that's what we're going to be doing with Punga Ferry, it's what we're going to be doing with the New Bridge, Sand Bridge intersection, some others need it badly like Indian River, but they're extremely, extremely costly. And so really, I guess the only hope we have is, is for some federal funding with these. I guess we did get some with the Punga Ferry Road, and we're grateful for that, but it's such a, I mean, because it's not only Back Bay, everybody thinks Back Bay, but the Northland and River is a big contributor to all of this, and those waters were angry last week. So I, I hope when you all are seeing some of the emails that you're getting and you, and you see these roads flooded and people say, when are you going to do something about this? You understand, it's not, we're not talking about rainwater mainly in the southern part of the city, it's, it's the wind tide.
Anybody else? Let me say that I think the front page article in the highlight today says a lot and underscores the dilemma that we're going to be facing in the future. You know, certainly, we want to honor the obligation of the intent of the bond referendum, but it's going to cost a lot more money to do that. And then when you combine, you know, what's necessary for other public utilities and public works projects, because we are an aging infrastructure, and we certainly are going to have some challenges ahead of us. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last CIP briefing will be Tony Utterback giving a presentation on the flood protection program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany. I'm happy to present to you the new Stormwater Engineering Center Administrator. His name is Mike Tippin. He's going to be giving the Flood Protection Program CIP. While Mike Tippin is new to this position, he's not new to the city. In fact, in May, he will have been with the city 11 years. He's been with the Stormwater Engineering Center for two years, and I'm happy to present to you Mike Tippin.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. I am Mike Tippin, and I lead the Stormwater Engineering Center, and thank you for this opportunity to present our program to you. Starting with where our money's coming from, we're just shy of about $800 million in this program, 39 total projects and programs. A vast majority of that, 92%, comes from local funding, with the majority of that from the bond referendum. And then there's a couple others kind of spread throughout state local funding. And here is some of our competitively attained funds, actually all of them, total of $66 million is what we have basically won over the past two to three years. And a lot of that's attributed to Katie Shannon and her group and the engineering support, as well as the commitment from the community with over 70% approving the bond referendum. And then the design public, the Public Works Design Standard Manual shows these granting agencies the commitment that we have as a community and as a city to make our city more resilient. Whoops. Now, going through a couple of our, or all of our programs and master projects, starting with the Central Resort District, we got three projects currently totaled at $113 million with about $15.6 million balanced to complete. Eastern Shore Drive totals eight projects, just over $93 million, with about $38.8 million balanced to complete. And those first four projects are all bundled together under one, and that's, we won a $25 million brick grant for, and we're at 90% design currently and looking to advertise late summer for that. Lake Bradford, Chub Lake Master Project, two projects with $152 million estimated budget with about $38 million left to complete. And we have a FEMA brick grant out right now for $30 million. If we're anxious to see the results from that, and if we're successful, they'll put us just under $100 million in grants awarded since 2021, which I think is pretty significant for us. Next, Linkhorn Bay Master Project, two projects in there. Total, what is that, 13? Yeah, almost $14 million with about $2.6 shy of balanced to complete, and the Sea-Tac Neighborhood Drainage Improvements is currently in construction right now. Next is the Green Infrastructure, absolutely awesome projects, two of them totaling $63 million with about $13.4 million left to complete. Next, Southern Rivers, three projects with a heavy roadway component to them, $113 million estimated total project with about $24.6 million left to complete. And then finally, the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, the Lakes, 10 projects totaling just shy of $500 million and with about $226.7 million balanced to complete. And there are seven of those projects that are bundled together that are affectionately called the mega, mega project, mega bundle. And those have already been awarded, delivered via design-build, and we got the team of Flatiron and Arcadis, and we have our, I'd say the pedal through the floorboard, not so much to the metal, but it's through the floorboard on delivering this one. And here's a couple projects and programs that are not included in those seven master projects. The first three are all in construction right now, we're just wrapping up, and the last four are ongoing programs that we maintain throughout. And then a few more programs here with ongoing funding. And now, a couple projects with some modifications. The first, you've heard about the CSRM or the Coastal Storm Risk Management Study, and this is performed by the Corps of Engineers to give us a lot of different strategies on how to prevent some of that coastal flooding we see from the storms that we have coming through. This complements our sea level wise program very nicely, and this will be a great, great project going forward. And the next is our, the Neighborhood Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements. We're looking for about 1.5 million, or 1 million, 1.5 million in FY '29 and '30, and it's an ongoing program for these projects that are too big for maintenance but too small for a standalone CIP. And there's four or five we've completed just recently, Muddy Creek Road, Indian River Road, culvert replacements, and two current ongoing with Country Club Road and Goodspeed Pump Station replacements. And I'm sure you've heard from a lot of the other divisions, the major challenges, not unique to us, the ongoing overall construction cost increases, equipment, material, lead times, endangered or listed species, seasonal restrictions, and the tree mitigation of unfunded mandate for right now. Now, after all the numbers, a little bit of eye candy with some of the projects that we currently have in construction. The first, Bow Creek Stormwater Park, excited to see this completed in late 2026 for just shy of $40 million. Huge project, a million cubic yards of soil to remove, so we all need some soil. You know where to come get it. And then second, South Plaza Trail Presidential Boulevard, about 2,000 feet of 72-inch pipe through an established neighborhood. And that 72-inch pipe, you got a 12-foot wide trench going down the road. It's, to find that real estate is a challenge, a lot of... It's, to find that real estate is a challenge, a lot of conflicts with existing utilities. So it's been a, it's been a bear. And just down the road from that is Old Forge Road, Red Lion Drainage Improvements, very similar, about 36 to 48-inch pipe, looking to complete that late 2024 at a cost of $5.1 million. And then Sea Tech Neighborhood Drainage Improvements, finished that around late 2025 at a cost of just shy of $7 million. And the last one, I'm sure we've all seen, the Red Crane off at 264 next to Mount Trashmore. We're Windsor Woods Tide Gate, four tide gates being built right now, finished mid-2025 at $21.2 million. And just finished, the projects we finished within the last year, Lake Bradford Ditch Dredging, total project cost 2.3 million. We finished that in December of '23, and that alone has made a significant improvement to the community upstream. And then secondly is the Lake Pleasure House Pump Station, finished in September of '23 at a cost of 1.4 million. And the last one is the Cape Henry Ditch Sanitary Sewer Relocation. The sins of our forefather decided to put a sanitary sewer line beneath a ditch that we had to relocate the sanitary sewer onto Cape Henry Drive so we can widen and deepen the ditch as one of the Eastern Shore Drive drainage projects. And with that, if anyone has any questions or...
No question. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I really appreciate your presentation, and the majority of these projects and investment happen to be in District Three. And so, and it's just incredibly important, I think, as a body, as we move forward, that we find ways to fulfill our commitment to flood protection. Commitments that we made before the bond referendum and commitments that certainly we made as part of the bond referendum when the voters approved by approximately 75% these projects and the investment that comes with them. And as a council member from District Three, I understand very well, and if you needed any evidence about it, we could just look at the front page of the paper today to remind us that the residents who experienced flooding as part of Hurricane Matthew and other events, but specifically Hurricane Matthew, continue to live with the trauma of the impacts of that storm event. And I'm so pleased to see, as I drive around the neighborhood, the tide gate happening at Lake Windsor, the improvements on Presidential Boulevard, and I could go on and on. The Bow Creek is under construction, and the photos from that look really amazing, the scale of it. But when we have discussions about spending around this body, about any, anything that relates to spending, you will hear me raise the issue of the unfunded gap on our flood protection program. And it's not because I'm in opposition to other programs or to other CIP investments or to any of the other topics that come up, it's because we made a commitment to this part of the city and to all parts of the city as well, that we would prioritize these projects. And we really needed to develop a plan on how we're going to close that gap. The gap was, we've known about the gap for a long time. The gap was highlighted in the newspaper on the front page today. The public is becoming more and more aware of it, and I think they have an expectation that we develop a plan to close that gap. And you're doing great work, and City Manager Duhany, you're doing a great job, so is Mr. Hanson and Tony and everyone. But we have, we have got to provide the public with a greater assurance that we are capable of developing a plan that will close that gap. And so far, all we've done is really acknowledge that it exists. And I like to include that, you know, in our strategies for moving forward as we think about, and I'm not going to name them, but we're all aware of the other budgetary pressures, including a conversation we just had today. And I think the public has an expectation that we finish these programs on time and on budget. I could go on, but I think I made my point.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to, our intent is to get all the information we possibly can get you about the programs, flood protection program, the CIP program, and then complete the rate study for the ERU, and then bring counsel the challenges and then also options to address those challenges, right, towards the fall of this year, right? You know, and from there, we hope to get counsel's guidance as it relates to how you would like us to address that as part of, and then we'll hope to take it up as part of the recommended budget to counsel. So it isn't lost on to us, you know, I think we briefed you all on it last year, Councilman Berluci, we articulated, we just need a little bit more time to get a better sense of what it is and get some of these projects to a closer state of design where there's less moving in terms of what we know, in terms of like price impacts and things like that. We think we're to the place now where we have to come back to you all, and we're probably in a better position from a design standpoint to let you know a little bit better of what the totality of the need is going to be for you all to give us some policy direction.
Well, I think that's sort of what I'm going to ask or comment on or something as we go forward with these projects to design, because unfortunately, when we did the bond referendum, they had not gotten to that critical point, and so a lot of it was estimation. And so as you design these projects, then you're going to be able to determine really what they are going to cost, and that's where you really get the ability to tell. And so these projects that have already been completed, I guess they were probably in some aspect of design when you, when we did the referendum, and so they were simpler and they've moved forward, but these that are left now are the really complicated ones. And that, I mentioned the Punga Ferry Road project, I think it was in the bond referendum, was it this 11 and a half million was what we had for that, but now we've got this additional 19 million. And so on Slide 10, where you have the estimated cost of that, it's $36,100,000, and this 11 and a half million is what's appropriated to date, but does not include the 19 million yet, because that's not been appropriated. So we are much closer, but I don't think this design is complete yet either, so that number could very easily go up more.
Very good point.
So that, but this 36 million is a new number, it's the first I had seen that, but I guess that's still not complete design, and so that might not be all either, is that correct?
I would say that's a fair assumption.
But with that 19 million from the, and I think that's another source that we have to look at, is our federal and state partners on these things. And it looks like the federal has been coming through a lot, because we've got 66 million so far. And I really compliment the staff on being aware of where those monies are and are applying for them, and that's what we're going to have to do as we have better numbers going forward. Thank you, I think that clarifies that a lot.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris?
Mayor Dyer, I'm Councilman.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor has the last presentation, where I think that now it's council's conversation.
Okay, any council comments? Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. A few public updates. District 10, I'm hosting a Public Safety Town Hall next week, Wednesday, April 24th through 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Green Run High School. And also for the public, we have upcoming budget public hearing, so our first one is this week on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. at the Convention Center. Also, the public is welcome to provide input on the budget, they can go to speakupbb.com and review the budget and leave comments and leave questions. So if you're unable to come to the public hearing in person, you can do so, you can give feedback virtually, go to speakupbb.com. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else familiar?
Yes, I do. I'm passing around, as I mentioned, I think a week or so ago, about Ride With Me on Earth Day. First, I would like to ask our attorney a question about this, because some cities are doing this as a group, but as you know, we have the only two together, and this, I was trying to see if all of us would be able to do this. Is this a yay-nay, or can people just on that day take their own time and ride the bus? What would be preferred?
Well, as long as you don't discuss city business while you're together, provide notice that you're going to be doing it.
Yeah. And just to ask council members, if any of you are interested, the designated time is between 11:00 to 1:00, so we'll meet at Constitution and then take the ride and it'll bring us back before 1:00. Or if people prefer, it's a free ride, but just to give you an opportunity to ride the bus, and it's free. That's April 22nd. So if any of you are interested in doing this, if you let me know, if there are more than two, I will definitely pass that on to our attorney. And there's also opportunity to even ride the tide, so this is why I pass this out. If anyone is interested, please let me know.
They're going to give us lunch, too, it's lunchtime.
Uh-oh. That's true, that's true. So we'll see. If we've got enough interest, then of course, I can find some nice lunch, bananas or something for those who would like to go at the Center. Okay, the second I want to mention, we had two programs last, I think this would have been Friday, from MBC, the Minority Business Conference, they had the Contractors Round Table, even though a few of us were busy here and there, I thank Mayor Dyer for coming and speaking, I got there just as she finished off. And, but I did stay for the next part, which was the GAP, and if some of you didn't know about the GAP, at least I have. The purpose of the GAP, which is the Growth Achievement Program, is to advise SWAM, business owner with tragedies to evaluate past, current, and future best practices to obtain growth. The program meets participants where they are in their business journey and provides opportunity to strengthen skills and realize growth. Guest speakers share their journey as small business owners, participants had the opportunity to ask questions, get advice, and learn techniques they could use in their own business, and students use the information shared in the class and enray time and made connections with new customers. One of the participants was able to reach out to some of her contacts who connected her with possible clients. They had about 27 for that graduation, it was really very interesting, some of them who want to be part of different festivals, like Something in the Water, Robbie Wells was there to talk with us, and Regina Tony from Dreams Builders Communication, and I also spoke to them. And then the final thing I had, which was what? There was a third, I cannot remember it.
Oh, that goes back to our first briefing.
Yes.
That's good, Bobby, that's really good.
And Billy, I have my senior moments, too, believe me.
If it comes back to me. Go ahead.
Okay, Sabrina.
Just want to provide a friendly reminder about a community meeting that will take place on Thursday, this Thursday, April 18th. It will take place at 6:30 at College Park Elementary Center or School in the cafeteria. We will discuss such topics as community policing, as well as updates on Level Green Park and Parks and Recs, information updates in general. So I'd like to invite everyone in District Seven and beyond to the community meeting. Again, that's Thursday at 6:30. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Who's back?
As Council Mayor's on for the 250 commission, Worthen are a part of this, and they have been working really hard, pulling ideas, they even want to do a reenactment, maybe at our last July, but I'll find out when our last meeting is, where they can do a two or three meetings dressed in period clothes at the front and maybe read a proclamation. But we will need some dollars, so we'll talk and maybe during public hearing or somewhere about what it takes, even if you all meet us halfway or what. But it's very exciting, and people across Virginia are doing different events, and we want to make sure we're in that room. So thank you.
Very, very well done. Okay, yeah, Hutch.
Hey, I just had one thing, and you were involved also, Mayor, you went to the fundraising event, I believe, for the Ability Centers?
Yes, I did.
I'm just passing these around, I went, I was very fortunate that this was, it's in the first district, over off Arrowhead Drive in Kimsville, right on the, right on the edge of all three of our districts, actually. But her name is Michelle, and it's Prendergast. What a wonderful human being, and what they've developed over there is quite phenomenal. They're a 501-3C, and they own their own building, and they've got a wonderful problem, they've outgrown it. Yeah, they were, they've got a card studio where they make their own cards, and I'll just read real quick, the mission is to positively affect the quality of life for individuals with physical and intellectual disabilities and their families, creating greater independence, ability, and inclusion in the community. And y'all, it really, it really is, they had 40 folks in there when I was in there, and they're very unique in how they make it work, a few in this room, another in a larger room, but it doesn't meet their needs, so they're going to start looking to expand. And if you see the page there, they've done a very good job of stating what their needs are and what they're going to be shooting for. They're not asking us for anything as of, as of right now, it's just, they just want us to be aware that they're there, and they are doing a great service for our citizens, and they have quite a waiting list of folks trying to get in, and they do summer programs, it's a really great program.
And I'll tell you what, it's really, yeah, a great group of folks, they work with a lot of folks with developmental disabilities, cerebral palsy, and especially ones that go into adulthood, and it's just a loving, caring organization, and just helps why Virginia Beach is considered the most caring city, right, Hutch? Okay, how about...
Ready for the agenda?
Agenda review.
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, is everybody okay with everything? Bring up anything? All right, under planning, we will be pulling Wood Cliff. Number one, number two, Carl Ellis, they want that deferred, did they say...
To May 21st, they want a 30-day referral. Counselor, you wrote that down.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, please.
To May 21st, thank you. Number three, Virginia Beach Ava, that is in District Three.
That's okay for consent.
Number four.
Okay for dissent, consent.
Number five, the, I have to stand on this, is everybody else okay with it? Number six, Terry Moore, District Five, oh, that's a short turnaround, I'm fine with that. Number seven, ordinance two, section 111, there is one speaker on that, this is about the home.
There are two speakers now, so that is a speaker.
All right, then we will be... Number seven, that's it.
All righty.
So all ordinances are on, are on consent?
Yes.
Madam Clark, do I have to read a script thing on 13?
Not yet. Only if it's full.
Only if it's full, okay.
Is that right, Mark?
Correct.
Okay. All right, good, and here we go. The Chair will entertain a motion in recess as to a closed session pursuant to the intentions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or considerations of acquisitions of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A three, District Six. And then a public... And then a public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions of the terms of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A 29, ECS supplemental support and personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to, pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1, and that's council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion. Second.
Counselor Berluci.
Aye.
Counselor Henley.
Aye.
Counselor Haggison.
Aye.
Counselor Marimet.
Aye.
Counselor Walton.
Aye.
Counselor Scholman.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye. Okay, we are recessed to close.